All right, so I have 5:30. We will call to order the study session of our fund balance and reserve policy. Director Farman.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. We do have a study session tonight on the city's fund balance and reserve policy. This is a follow-up topic from the council retreat that was in February, and tonight's goal is to garner some council direction to either maintain or to update this financial policy. So the city's current financial policy is from 2015, Exhibit A in the packet, and it includes these major aspects. The unreserved fund balance is defined as six months of expenditures, net of capital, and transfers out in the general fund. These funds will be unobligated and can be used for the subsequent year's budget. So that means they really don't have any strings attached, and that's why that is unreserved. So the reserve part of the fund balance in the current policy is 10% of expenditures, and that can be used for possible revenue shortfalls, or when expenditures are greater than current year revenues. So together, those two reserve amounts in the general fund are 60% of expenditures. And we do have some other city funds that are mentioned in the policy, with really the only other defined reserve is an emergency reserve of 3% in the Parks and Recreation Fund for revenue shortfalls or expenditures when they might exceed current revenues. Other aspects of the policy are generally common in most other municipal fund balance Staff has been working for quite a while on this possible policy update, and we worked with Councilmember Holland, who is the finance liaison, on some possible updates, and we have a recommended policy to discuss tonight. We also used a new template that's out on the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, and that's a policy template that they've developed. We also reviewed that along with other policies from municipalities in and out of the state. So we tried to look at a lot of various sources. Of course, each organization's policy requirements will vary depending on what their revenue streams are, and what their services that they offer, and what their community goals are. So there's a lot of different variables. Tonight's recommended policy changes reflect the risk of an extreme event such as a pandemic, natural disaster, or other city declared emergency. Obviously, in 2015, we did not have a clue that a pandemic was going to occur, but now that it has, we need to be prepared. So I will briefly review the major changes, and council, please stop me if there's a question about any one of these aspects. First of all, this policy includes a forecast period, and that is determined by council. We talked about this a little bit at the retreat, and right now, our forecast period is 10 years. This is important because if there is a forecasted shortfall per policy during this time period, it is required for the city manager to design a plan to restore that forecasted reserve to the required level by the next submission of the proposed budget. This enables council to provide adequate time in making proactive adjustments to service levels or other components of the budget in alignment with the policy. The general fund reserve level is recommended at 50% of budgeted revenues. The staff is recommending revenues as a reserve basis because it does cover revenue shortfalls, and if there is a natural disaster or other city declared emergencies, we believe that revenues are higher than the expenditures, so that provides a little bit more conservative and higher amount of reserve level. The policy also provides required reserves in the other two major city funds, the Parks and Recreation along with the Capital Fund. We have the Parks and Recreation reserve level recommended at 25% of budgeted revenues, and then we have the Capital Fund level for the reserve to be at the subsequent annual CIP forecast amount. So if we're looking, we already have the 2024 budget for the Capital Fund, so it wouldn't be 2024, it would be the subsequent year. So in essence, the reserve, we would know that the reserve would cover that next year of capital items should we need that. And if there's a project that might be over a two-year time period, that's what that reserve would be used for. The general fund reserve amount would also include the 3% Tabor requirement, and all of these reserves would actually be calculated but then shown in the general fund. So for instance, in 2024, if we look at the general fund revenues, 12.1 million, the 50% would be a little bit over $6 million. For the Parks and Recreation, 25% of 3.9 million would be close to $1 million. And then if we look at the capital improvement program for 2025, it would be $1.2 million. So the total reserve amount is $9.1 million. So that would be shown as a reserve in the general fund. And that, so that's a part, that would be a part of the overall fund balance.
And can I, just a quick question about that to make sure I understand. It's shown in the Capital Fund, but it doesn't necessarily come from the Capital Fund?
It's calculated from the Capital Fund, but it's actually, the reserve is actually shown in the general fund.
Right.
Like, right now, we have our internal quarterly financial statements, and we show the unreserved and the reserved fund. So that would be, that reserved amount would be all three of those.
All three of them together. I just wanted to make sure that we're not having to take, not having to fund reserves for parks and capital improvements necessarily out of our general fund.
Right. Yeah, good clarification. And right now, the auditor, the city's auditor, actually calculates the Tabor reserve, and that is based on overall revenues for all city funds. And then that reserve for Tabor is actually shown just in the general fund. So we kind of are using the same concept here.
When you say budgeted revenues, you mean relative to, for example, the general fund or relative to Parks and Rec? It's not, it's not all budgeted revenues?
Right. It's those individual fund revenues, which is the majority.
We're not.
Yeah.
But let me come back to what Katie was saying, though, because we are doing that. That is the proposal. The reserve, which, if you read it, I mean, it's just, all it is, is a number sitting there, for parks and for capital, is funded by the general. It is taken out of the general fund revenues, and it's going to sit there. You know, so you have, you know, if you have $30 million in the park in the, in the, in the general fund at some point, which we will, that $12 million will sit down there, and it'll say you've got $18 million of unreserved funds at that point in time. I think that's right, Doug, right?
But give it.
But the point is, but the point is, is that, you know, it's a reserve figure. So it's such a time that all of a sudden, if you needed it, you know, you would have exhausted the Parks Fund, you would have exhausted the Capital Fund. I mean, you know, by definition, if we exhaust those funds, where else is it going to come from but the Capital?
Well, so I guess where I'm coming from, though, is that we obviously have a very healthy Parks Fund balance, and we are able to spend any funds we have above and beyond whatever reserves we require, right? So if the Parks Fund has a $1 million required reserve, as an example, then that's $1 million in general fund money that we can't spend.
Well, that's the other thing is, is that you can't, you can't, staff can't spend it. Council can come around and go, hey, we authorize you to spend it.
Well, in an emergency, but if it were, if it weren't required, if we didn't have to take that $1 million out of our general fund money and set it aside as reserves, then it would be above and beyond the reserves, and we could spend it. If the $1 million Parks Reserve was taken out of the Parks money
Right.
and set aside in the Parks money, then that's $1 million that's not taken out of our general fund money.
Right.
Right. And so, given how healthy our Parks Fund is and how not as healthy, I mean, it's healthy, just not as healthy, our general fund revenues are, it seems like if we can set aside, if we can set aside money out of the existing reserves to say this is our emergency reserves and everything else can be spent, that seems like maybe a...
And you can, and you can do that, but also, and I don't know if you looked at the long-range fan, plan, we know that we're going to build reserves in there, but I mean, we're actually, with the things that we've been doing, you know, that Parks Fund balance isn't as big as you thought it was.
Well, right.
I mean, because we've found ways to spend it, spend it elsewhere. Your point is still well-taken, but the, the issue is, is that, given, I'm comfortable, either way, I raised this with these guys, but they convinced me, and I said, yeah, it's easier just to kind of show it at the end of the day, showing that reserve sitting there and recognizing what the reserve is for, what it is and what it isn't, which is, is, and we'll get to it once, once he gets on down the road, because the point is, is you're never going to get to, my view is, is you're never going to get to that reserve because it's going to go, it's going to go, it's, what's the word I'm looking for? It's not, it's going to be depleted, not depleted, it's going to be below the levels many years out, which is going to cause staff to come back to us and go, what are you going to do about that? You got to get this thing back above. We're never going to get to that reserve.
Yeah.
Unless there is a huge catastrophe.
Randy.
But it does, it does seem to me that the, the Parks are kind of an independent profit and loss, if you will, with its own income that's restricted and with its own expenses. Is it possible to fund the Parks Reserve out of the Park's surplus as opposed to impacting the general fund?
You could, yes. You could have the reserve shown as part of that fund balance in the Parks and Recreation Fund.
It seems like it kind of keeps it a little cleaner, you know, having one P and L, more or less. I mean, P and L may not be the right term, but one fund that's sort of restricted and independent where, you know, we have the general fund that isn't. I don't know. It seems like that would be putting the revenue and the costs and the reserves in one.
I think that's an important point, yes. And, you know, the general fund is really going to be kind of the backstop for the city just in case there is a natural disaster or some of these other funds, you know, eventually use their fund balance.
Well, and, but to pick up on that, though, and it does, it makes sense, but then by that, and if you run that string out going, well, let's really try to keep, okay, then really, the Parks Fund should also then have its share of the Capital Fund Reserve and the general fund its share. I mean, so you see, we've gone from, let's shove it all in the general fund, to, well, no, let's have the Capital Fund in the general fund. Oh, well, now let's have the Capital Fund pieces shown in those separate funds. I mean, you can run that string out. If you're saying, hey, we want to be as accurate as we can be, then run that string out. Now, all of a sudden, and, and that makes sense.
Well, I agree, I agree with you. I, I hear that. I do think that maybe adds a level of complexity that maybe isn't necessary, but because the Parks and Recreation Funds are restricted, where Capital Funds, the Capital Fund is just money we put in there. And so I'm comfortable with those being set aside in the general fund because they, because we can either choose to put them in there or not on any annual basis. But the Parks Fund, those dollars are restricted, they're going to go into that fund no matter what, and they can only come out for Parks purposes. And I don't think that we need to be funding the reserves of a restricted fund with unrestricted dollars.
Yep. And, and again, we talked about that. I mean, you know, it makes sense at the end of the day. You get close, I mean, you're going to have, that, for instance, the Parks Fund will, 2024 will basically have $1 million of unreserved funds in it, because so much money's coming in, you're sitting there going, like I say, it's about $1 million. The fund balance at the end is just 1.9 million. So that's 1 million off 19, that's 900,000 bucks. I mean, you're really starting to get down low at that point.
Eventually, you'll probably get close to that.
Yeah. I mean, you'll.
Reserve level.
Depending upon, depending upon what projects we have, and I think, you know, this is, it's a fair comment to make, most of the things, I think, in Sherrill Hills are probably going to be Parks, trails, open space, fund, those kinds of things. We're going to be pushing a lot of the revenue coming out of the Parks Fund. I mean, that's, because that's what we want to do. You're, you're going to run into probably an issue, but you don't, we don't know, but we'll probably run into an issue with that reserve in the Parks Fund sooner rather than later.
Well, and, and I think to your earlier point, we could always make a decision to, down the road, to supplement with some general funds if we needed to. But I, I have that same feeling that if it's, if the monies are restricted, it's kind of a one-way door, you know? It's better to let it fund itself out of its own surpluses and keep that isolated than to supplement with the general funds until such time as it would become, you know, really a necessity.
And not to be picky, but I do, and this is one of the things that we need to do is, these terms are important. I wouldn't use that word restricted, that reserve, but I mean, restricted starts to take on a whole nother meaning.
No, I'm thinking Parks and Rec Fund.
Right, but it's, well, you're just thinking the Parks and Rec Fund overall as opposed to the reserve being restricted.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
No. Now, I suppose it would be if we funded it out of the
Yeah.
Parks and Rec Fund, then the reserve too would be restricted, but that's, you know, that's, it's, it's still kind of in that, in that bucket where, you know, it's a one-way door problem.
Yeah.
You know, it can go in, but it can't come out.
I mean, I guess, to your point, Earl, it's, I can kind of go either way. I don't know. Do other people have any preference?
Because I'm a six, one, half dozen of the other. We talked about it, and the staff kind of thought that made sense, and I thought.
Whereas my friend says half of one, six dozen of the other. Yep.
I mean, I guess my comment is, if you're dropping all the other ones down, and you have contingency, contingent funds coming there, you might as well just make it look the same for this one, but again, it sticks in one.
Yeah. All right. Well, it's a study session, so I guess we can leave that open for consideration. Please continue.
Okay. No, I appreciate the point, and good discussion there. I think that's really all I had. I have one minor change, and I'd like to know if council is ready to entertain a resolution at some point in the near future. But in the, Jim and I were, were looking at the narrative on the Capital Fund Reserve, and it, right now, it says the reserve equivalent to the subsequent annual CIP forecast of annual capital assets. We thought that should be clarified a little bit, because the other reserves talk about the budget, the current year budget. So if we said the reserve equivalent to the subsequent budget year fund forecast, to me, that would be clearer that that would be 2025 and not looking at 2024.
So is that, so are you saying whatever the forecasted capital asset expenditures for that year?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree. I find it hard to understand, but it seems to me that you ought to be talking about not forecast of capital assets, but capital asset expenses, right? Or expenditures or something?
Our intent was just to use the capital improvement program, but obviously, we've already adopted the budget for 2024. The intent is to look at the next year, the subsequent year, so 2025, and that reserve would be based on 2025 capital fund that's in the CIP. So we'd like to clarify that a little bit more there, because I, I think that gets a little cloudy right now the way it's worded.
Yeah, I agree, Susan, that it, because our assets are actually worth a lot.
Yeah, and our, yeah, our capital assets and all of that is part of that.
Expenditures or something like that. Okay.
So we can work on that language, too, for the draft resolution.
The other thing while you're looking at that, and I went back and looked, you know, the rewrite there, the acceptable uses of reserves, and I think I know what it means, but when you just read the black and white, reserves should not be used for recurring annual operating costs. And it's kind of, and it's, that's right in terms of.
In an emergency, they should.
But that's the thing is, is that they're, they're going to be used for recurring annual operating costs if we ever get into the emergency. That's not what.
That's an exception, right?
Right, but it, but it's somewhere, I think that that probably needs to be clarified a little bit more, or maybe even taken out, to be honest with you. a little bit more, or maybe even taken out, to be honest with you. I don't think that sentence is actually necessary.
Okay.
If you see what I mean.
Yeah, we can make some changes to that.
But I think that, the thing that I'd like to talk about with council though, is, and again, if you get this right, I mean, so the forecast period's 10 years out, and the policy says, hey, if within the forecast period, we fall below that reserve, staff has to come back and propose to us a plan to get it back really, really quick. And if you think about it, it's not going to fall, it's not going to go from, hey, we're good for 10 years out, and then go to three years. It's not going to do that. It's going to go nine years, and it's going to fall, and we're going to be going, fix it now. And presumably, responsible councils won't just say, ah, the hell with it, it's nine years, we won't do anything. No, 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 we will do that. If it kept going negative, and we kept going, and eventually you get to the point where you fall below and you start to use the reserve in that current year if there was an emergency. That has to be restored, replenished immediately. So if you think about it way out in time, do these reserve levels make sense? I mean, I sit back and go, I think a 50% reserve, giving the, what we're doing here, is way more than we need. That, that was my sense. Staff, rightfully so, being conservative, thought back, but I sit back and I go, and that is a big freaking reserve that ultimately is going to push us probably sooner rather than later, within the next couple, three years, be my guess, to sit there and go, hey, we got a problem in 2035, so we need a plan, and this council or the next council needs to address it seriously to restore it, because that's what, that's what the policy says. And we'll be taking actions, presumably, to do something 10 years out, nine years out, but they're going to have impacts today to restore something at that level. And my sense is, so I just wanted to, I wanted to talk with my fellow counselors and get their sense about it. I talked with staff about it, but obviously, I want to talk with you guys about it.
But I, I think it's, it's a good point. The, the thing that causes me to pause a little bit is this whole taper business, that, you know, from the time one realizes there's a problem to developing a plan of action, executing, communicating, you know, getting something on the ballot, if it's taxation, that's the remedy, you know, that can be a year, year and a half. And, and if, if the crisis hits, you know, would, would, would we be better off having that kind of reserve underneath us so that we've got time to do it right? And what if the ballot measure failed? And, you know, you can kind of go through iterations that could cause a lingering of a, of a bad situation. If it were, if it were something where we could just make a decision, you know, I, I agree, 50% is pretty generous, but I, I worry about the, the challenges of, of increasing revenue. That's, that's the, the thing that gives me some hesitation about, you know, saying, let's go to 25 or something lower, you know, than 50.
That, to your point, and that's, to your point, that's, that's exactly, it's like sitting back and you're going, okay, we got an issue nine years from now, in, in 2033, and we say, give us the plan, and they go, well, we can, we can cut back on staff, and we're going, yeah, we don't want to do that. I mean, let's, you know, well, we can do this, well, we can do that. We're going to be sitting there going, we need to talk about increasing taxes. Nine years, nine, to your point, nine years in advance, that's a long time in order to be able to do, I don't think with the policy, and I like this, I mean, you guys might not like it, but I mean, I like it, which sits back and says, hey, within the forecast period, which by the way, council can short, council can make the forecast period one year if they want to do, but 10 years out, which is what we said at this point in time, you're going to be taking, you're going to be doing some things way out in time. You're going to be doing things now to affect something way out in time. And so then the question is, is 50% the right level or not, or, or should it be something less given? And the shorter that forecast period, that's where I say the greater that reserve number should be. The longer that forecast period, the lesser that it can be. And, you know, this is something that you guys have heard me harp on, some of you have for a long time, when we did the first long-range forecast, when we did those COPs, and I said, at some point, we've got to determine what these metrics are that cause us to take action, and it's not going to be anything in the annual budget year to year.
Right.
It's going to be looking at this long-range forecast, and this one, which I like, 10, in 10 years, I think is a pretty good, pretty good number, arguably might be something different, but you'd sit back and you go, wow, okay, next year, we doing in 20, 2034, it falls below, and we, we have an obligation to do something about it based on this policy.
Well, that, and there's also the scenario though, where there's some emergency that causes us to, there's a huge flood and it washes out Quincy. And then we are, then the requirement is, as I understood it at least, that, so let's say, you know, tomorrow, we have a huge multimillion dollar unexpected expense, we have to dip into our reserves to pay for that, and then we have to develop a plan to replenish that in the next 10 years. Is that right? That within the forecast period, we have to replenish it within the forecast?
No, no, we have to replenish it.
By the next budget, budget cycle, the city would present, the staff would present a plan to replenish it. It doesn't have to be, I, I don't think it specifies in there that it has to be replenished the next year, but we have to at least have the plan to replenish it.
Right. Well, that was, because I wanted to make sure that it, there was, what that timeframe of replenishment was, one place I read, it kind of sounded like you'll make a plan to replenish it, you know, by the next year, which means you'll make the plan by the next year, not replenish it by the next year, but then it says, like, through the forecast period or something like that. So that, to me, meant we will develop a plan to replenish it within 10 years.
And, and again, it's, there's two things. One is, which, it's, it's going to be hard to hit that, certainly anytime soon with our, with the way our financial condition is. There's the projections falling below the reserve level out in time, and that needs to be restored. I'm using that word restored, as opposed to, we actually use the reserves, we spend the reserves. We have an emergency, for instance, in 2024, that requires us, that goes, hey, not only do we have to spend $15 million, we need to spend $19 million, which would cause us to go $3 million into our reserve. The reserve has to be replenished within the next budget cycle, replenished within the next budget cycle.
Oh, that's, that's not practical.
I think that is what it says, isn't it?
No.
We talked about that.
Whatever minimum amount of time is practical, so council would have to approve that plan. So let's say the forecast shows the city is going to fall below the reserve level nine years from now, city manager might come out with a plan, we're going to bring the city fund balance back up to the reserve after four years, and so council would discuss and approve that plan. But no, it doesn't have to be turned around that quickly.
Yeah, you're right. Within the minimum amount of time, that is practical.
I don't know that that, yeah, not in all cases, I don't think that could really be, like, you know, realistic.
I mean, I think, the, you know.
Good point.
In my thinking about it, I think part of the 50%, and I, that's a great question, and I'd love to hear everybody weigh in on what you think the right number is. We're a pretty small community, and we have a pretty small budget, really, compared to, and, and, you know, one major road project is, is our entire annual budget. Luckily, we haven't seen anything like that, but, you know, so I, it's a great question. How do people feel about 50%? Dan, put you on the spot.
Well, I think, I think 50, I think 50 is a lot, and I know we have 25 called out for parks, maybe it's, maybe it's somewhere in between and do both at the same level, as opposed to 25 and 50, maybe we do everything at 30, 35, I don't know. The other thing I thought about was maybe, and I don't know if this works, but maybe some kind of sliding scale that as you get closer to the forecasted period, it shrink, it, it, no, it wouldn't shrink, it would get more as you get closer. So if it started off low today, because you've got so much time to replenish, each year that goes by, it has to increase just a little bit, a couple of points? I don't know. I'm, I also don't think that it's realistic to assume that we're going to have any kind of $15 million slug that's going to call on the city's funds. I don't think that's realistic. I don't think there is an emergency out there that I can think of that is a $15 million road improvement.
Well, even if a tornado took down this building, right, that wasn't even $15 million.
That's why we have insurance.
You have insurance.
Yeah, right, right.
That's another question I've got. What, I mean, if we, we're talking about all these catastrophic items that may occur, do we have insurance for them anyway? And so we're going to have some payment, maybe out of pocket, but I got to think that insurance is going to pay for some, you know, these catastrophic things if a storm comes and wipes out our bridges or roads or whatever we've got.
Jim, do you want to?
Jim or Jay?
Yeah. Well, there's a lot of things that can happen, and I've experienced several of them over my lifetime, being in local government. Examples of, of expenses that you hadn't anticipated. For example, a fire comes through town and wipes out, you know, 40, 50 homes. I've seen cities, well, let's not charge for permits. Well, that's a, you know, a big hit to the revenue that comes in that insurance won't pay for. There's a lot of disasters like that, that insurance may not cover certain things. When you take down a city hall, you may need the money a lot quicker than what the insurance company will be willing to reimburse. So from my standpoint, I, personally, I like the 50% on the general fund, just because a $6 million reserve is a good policy that, you know, we can get in and we can start doing work right away regardless of where the insurance company is going to fall. I mean, some of these things may be funded through federal government disasters, but some of those take years to recoup, and you need to have the money upfront and able to do the work.
Well, I, I think, I, I'm, really don't feel strongly about 50 versus 30 or 25. I, I do feel like so long as we have the ability to not be hamstrung, to have to, must replenish it in some given amount of time, that's a problem, right? Where we have to do a call on our citizens, raise taxes, that's a problem. So if it's best efforts and the city shall use its efforts to replenish in a reasonable amount of time or whatever it says, I guess that works for me.
Okay. Al, your thoughts?
I, I appreciate Jim updating us on 50% where it could come in, but, because I had no idea where 50% came from. I, my biggest concern, I think Dan just raised it, is replenishing over, if it's the next year, I don't know how it's going to be done, if it's a major, major number, but like if Earl said, it's over a period of time that the projected, forecasted year, that makes sense. So I'm not concerned one way or the other on the 50%.
Susan?
I'm, I'm good with the 50% number. I think that gives us a, a good cushion. If, you know, and it's, it's, it's the unusual event, the disaster that's going to draw on it. And it, and in that case, understanding that this isn't something typically that would happen on, you know, a regular basis, that, that does give you the time to replenish it, right? I mean, it's, so.
Gosh, one would hope, right?
Yeah. You have, well, yeah, and as soon as you say that, then you'll have two back-to-back disasters, but I think that gives us a good cushion to act.
Yeah.
So I'm okay with that.
Okay. Rob, you haven't chimed in yet?
Two things. One on the time period. I, I like the longer time period because I think it gets you planning for the very purpose of being able to know that we're going to have something coming up in nine years. Gives you time to figure out and put together that plan to make sure that we're, we're in the zone to be able to keep it well-funded and replenished. As far as a 50%, you know, I don't know the difference between 50 and 48, maybe I start to notice at 40. I prefer probably to have a greater amount of reserve for many of the reasons Jim mentioned, but, you know, that may put us in a situation where, I, I don't foresee a time when Cherry Hills Village is going to forego building permit fees or something like that. I mean, from what I've been able to see in, you know, Marshall Fire, it seems to be in areas where generally people can't afford to rebuild homes cost-effectively otherwise, and hopefully that will never happen here. But, you know, I'm okay with 50%. I, I, off the cuff, don't think that I would go below 40%, but if we picked a number in between 40 and 50, I also wouldn't have a problem with that.
Earl, you have?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to say about that though is, and if, you know, if that's, council sends 50%, I can live with it too. I, what I just want to say is, is that, does everybody agree that, for instance, if the forecast period was three years, you'd want that reserve level to be substantial? So I'm sitting back and going, so what, if it was three years, what, 150% of reserves? I mean, do we go, well, that's ridiculous, we're not going to go that high? I mean, so do you see what I'm saying? 10 years, I mean, you're out there, you're, that's, that's why I think at the end of the day, that's probably more than we probably need. The other thing to keep in mind too is, is, is again, this is a policy to guide us. The reserve that we're having for the general fund will be inclusive of that 3% tabor, so in other words, it'll really be like a 47% type of thing. But bear in mind, for instance, the tabor reserve is a restricted reserve. I mean, that actually, we don't have flexibility to do things as a council with that, other than what the statute calls for. The reserve, we do. I mean, we can sit back and go, hey, we, I mean, we've got an emergency, let's use it. Let's, let's, let's go. So there is flexibility. It's not like it's a reserve of cash sitting in the bank that's always going to be there, right? You know, no matter what happens, we have the ability to kind of use that and, and to whatever benefit we need to use it, it's consistent with the policy, just like any policy we have. So I like the fact that we're out 10 years. My sense is, is 50% is more than we probably need, and I think that's going to push us into probably, there's going to be some work that's going to need to be done by, I'll bet you within the next, the next council probably will be looking at an issue there.
Randy, yep?
Well, I, I would too. Let me just finish on that. Again, I think that that's an important thing.
I said I'd rather have us looking than not.
Right.
So that we're not caught by surprise.
And that's always the case, which is to look at this thing and out in time, that's the, that's always the thing we need to be looking at, not what's happening in the next year or two. It's always out there at this point in time for the reasons that you were talking about, because if we ever decide we need to do something, we want to have time to do it in a, in a reasonable manner that allows us to communicate with our citizens and make sure they understand whatever it may be at that point in time, so.
Question about the fund itself, I should know the answer to this, but let me ask the question and admit my lack of knowledge. The, the fund, the money itself, is it in an interest-bearing, some kind of return where we, it's not dead money just sitting there, right?
Right. It's in a, all the, all these funds are in interest-bearing accounts, yes.
Okay.
Even the checking account earns interest.
Well, to your question though, there is no restricted account. We don't have a general fund account and then the reserve general fund account. It's just all, wherever you have your general fund monies.
Sure.
Where it is, is, it's right here. I mean, it's, it's, it's right there. 22 million, and you take five out, and you just look at it and you say, yeah, I got 17 million that I can spend, even though there's 22 in the bank, or wherever you have it parked.
It's like a minimum balance type of idea.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so I think a few things that I have heard. I've heard agreement with the 10-year forecast time period. I've heard that generally, we're okay with 50%, although some of us would entertain perhaps a little bit less, but is there anyone who feels strongly enough that you'd like to propose a different number?
I'm not going to propose anything that I know isn't going to fly. So I couldn't get it past these guys, and I'm not going to get it past you, so.
The, the other thought is, you know, ride with this for a while, and it could, you know, it's not cast in concrete forever, so it could be amended on down the road.
It is a policy, so.
Yeah.
And then it, do, do we have, is there any thought on the other question of whether the, all the. the, all the reserves go into the, come from the capital fund or whether parks has its own reserve? Does anybody have a preference there, Susan?
I, I'm with you. I mean, I think to the extent we can fund it out of parks, we should fund it out of parks.
Okay.
And, and we can certainly override that if there's not enough money, but it ought to come from there.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
So Susan, I think Randy and I are on that page. Anybody else? Al's nodding. Dan could go either way.
Either way.
Okay. Well, I wouldn't exactly call it consensus, but maybe a slight leaning towards.
Action.
Okay, yeah, okay. Was there any other direction that we haven't summarized?
No. The only thing I'd say, and I think probably this is what you meant, Susan, when you said, hey, we can always override. We can always override, but the issue is, is that we're always going to start from what the policy says. So if the parks falls below, we're probably going to sit there and go, we aren't just going to sit there and go, yeah, remember we talked about it, it wasn't a big deal, let's just blow by it. We're going to sit there and go, well, no, we got to restore it, so how are we going to fund that project? Are we just going to push it off for another year that we want to do? That'll be the discussion that we'll have.
Well, and that seems appropriate.
Yeah, or change the policy.
Yeah, or change the policy, right? If it becomes too prohibitive. But I think it is appropriate that if we're, if we're effectively spending at a greater pace, then we're bringing it in, then we might need to consider whether we need to slow down or not put a project off for a couple of years.
Can't the policy provide, to the extent there are funds available in the park, Park and Recs Fund, considering the necessary expenses over the next however many years, that, that those funds will be used to fund the parks, uh, what are we calling it? Reserve?
Yeah.
And to the extent there aren't those funds available, they'll be funded out of the general fund, the reserve.
And we can certainly do, I mean, that, you know, by definition, whether it's capital fund, parks fund, whatever funds, I don't care what the funds are. If we've got responsibilities and obligations coming out of those specific funds and we fall short, it's going to come out of the general fund.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what the general fund is for.
I just generally would like to keep that unrestricted money in the general fund.
Sure.
At, at a clear level, because I, I got to be honest, if it, if push came to shove and it was the difference between funding our police department or mowing the grass in our parks a little less often, I think that's a pretty clear choice.
Right.
Um, so if we're, if we're spending more on our parks than we are bringing in, then I think, sorry over there, sorry Emily.
Things can love to.
Exactly.
Now, now, one interesting thing, as I was going through this, and again, it was, it's based on this guidance that came out by whatever, whoever wrote that guidance, but it was, it just, it just blew me away. It's talking about the TABR reserve, et cetera, and it sat back and it basically said that if cities municipalities get into an emergency situation and go into that reserve, they can pass temporary tax increases, certain tax increases, without going to a vote of the voters. And I almost fell out of my chair.
Well, and you could.
And you only can do it for a year. I mean, you can only do it for a year and then you got to go to the voters, but that did, I still was going, I can't believe you could do it right away. I mean, that just, that just blew me away. Uh, and it was also a positive I viewed in terms of giving municipalities the ability to operate, but it's.
Real extreme circumstance.
Real extreme circumstance, yeah.
Okay. Well, I think, thank you so much for your work on that. I think, um, hopefully that's the direction you need and.
Yeah, thank you for the guidance. I appreciate it. Jim and I will talk and come back with a, a resolution.
And thanks to Doug and Jim. I mean, they, Doug really did some great work on this, answered a lot of questions from me, provided a lot of research that he probably wasn't anticipating to do, but I think it was really worthwhile and good discussions with Jim and Doug. So I thought it was really, really strong work on behalf of sta, on behalf of staff.
All right. Well, we will close the study session at 6:15, and we have 15 minutes to take a quick break if anyone needs it before the start of the regular meeting.
A full house tonight. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:30. And welcome, it's always exciting to have so many people in the House. I'm sure you're all here for the budget discussion. All right, we will have the roll call of members, please. Counselor Eber?
Here.
Counselor Holland? Counselor Will?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum?
Here.
Counselor McGuire?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have audience participation. You'll be limited to five minutes. And is there anyone, everyone's had an opportunity to sign up, who wanted to sign up? Okay. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. First is Rich Warren.
Hello, everyone, Richard Warren, 46 Sedgwick Drive, Cherry Hills Village. Hello, can you hear me now? Testing, testing? No?
Wow, I can hear it all well up here.
Hello, hello? Is there a way to make it louder?
Yeah, we'll fix it. You can start and we'll fix it.
Okay, yeah, so I'm a citizen of Cherry Hills Village. We've lived here for about 13 years and absolutely love the town and our neighbors. And I'm here to basically make a statement just on behalf of kind of the use of Quincy Farms, which is something that we were kind of delighted to discover relatively recently. And my family and I have actually made use of it several times. My daughter and her friends had their senior pictures taken there and it was a great background for that. We also attended the Cherry Hills Barn Dinner, which I think, you know, it's a great venue for that as well because, you know, just as a tradition and a way to get, for the neighbors to get to know each other. Ah, there we go. And, you know, I know that there have been several different proposals for, you know, kind of what the farm could be used for. And I think, you know, the nature trail and actually promoting it more so that the citizens of Cherry Hills could, you know, know that it exists because it's kind of pretty well-hidden. And I know that it's been, there've been some controversy over the years, et cetera, but it seems like a lot of that's resolved at this point. It just seems like an incredible resource for our community and one that should be developed. And I highly support that. And I believe that, you know, it's something that really enhances the quality of life for our town, particularly because, you know, we don't really have a town square much in the way of commercial spaces for people to congregate. So, and again, I think that the intent, or, you know, probably the best use would be low-impact type uses, like, you know, what has been used for to date, like not big rock concerts that are going to affect neighbors, et cetera. But, you know, I think having it as a community resource where people can meet, clubs can meet, kids can go, you know, do nature trails, and of course, the barn dinner, I think would be all fantastic uses, so really promote supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen, I guess you have to cancel the Van Halen concert. Next up is Andrew Child.
I live on Cherry Ridge Road, 2555 Cherry Ridge. I would just like to echo, I mean, more or less what the previous statement was, which is, I have young children, there are not many events within Cherry Hills where we can bring kids, there are not a ton of outdoor events that are focused around nature and the environment. And the events at Quincy Farm are really, really important to us, especially as I'm growing my family and, you know, creating a larger community within the environment. So, you know, you can spend 100 grand to join a country club, or you can go to Quincy Farm and meet other people, you can really develop relationships with everyone in the community. And it's a place that we, you know, we've, I think we've gone to every event, or just about every event that they've had there. And it's a place that I really will continue to support and donate to because it's really important to my family.
Thank you. Janet Creiter.
Shorter here. I did a little homework on this, as it turns out. And I, coincidentally, to finding out about this meeting, we received the Cherry Hills Village history thing, which I can't recommend enough. For those of you who do not have it, you absolutely should get it. And in reading this, it was so compelling to learn not only what you've probably known as the history of Blackmer Commons in Quincy Farm, but what we have as a heritage here in Cherry Hills Village. We don't have a historic commission. We have what was originally developed in Sunset Place with our old dignitaries who moved there and then Cherry Hills Country Club. We had St. Mary's, we had the Village Club. Quincy Farm was one of the original houses from 1898. And then the Hopkins House and all that was built, the way things were. We have so little heritage in our city to begin with, but we have this nugget of a capsule, a time capsule, right here in our place that Kat Anderson, who also was called out in this book, I happen to have made copies for all of you, but as an incredible woman and resident of Cherry Hills, who had over 25 years ran the Cherry Creek Pony Club and she taught young local riders all aspects of equestrianism, including care, feeding, and competition. This was what our community was developed upon, was leaving the city and coming to rural areas. Additionally, in the city charters that I read about here, there were a lot of fighters in this city originally to bring in Mansfield Heights and all of that area and just to preserve a larger area around the rural communities. Additionally, they had a huge committee that fought an airport possibly being here at one time. And then they went on and, as a part of the city, developed parks as a part of a mandate. And they did Woody Hollow and they did Three Pond Park. Luckily, we have now Mead Park. And what is your legacy going to be next? Quincy, Quincy Farm, which is an incredible place that's accessible to everybody in our community with an eye to historic preservation of houses that our children and grandchildren will not see. There are none left in most communities, let alone something as well-preserved as that compound that was part of Blackmer. Kent was smart enough to buy Blackmer and they preserve it, all the 200 acres that there is there. Then I found in this section that I think is the most compelling, the Village Community. And this was written in November of 1960 about, in the Village Crier, about why we live here. We live here because we sought a return to a more elemental pattern. We sought a country life, a simplicity, a serenity, a kind of neighborliness which has in recent years faded, much from the urban seed. We need to see our children come home breathless and glowing, a newfound bird's nest clutched in their grubby hand. And then this, I think, is one of the most compelling statements that I found. "Since even before its incorporation, Cherry Hills visionaries and city planners recognized the importance of proper land use, overall aesthetics, and long-term protection and preservation." Sacco de Boer, and Sacco de Boer, I might emphasize, was, back when Ben Stapleton was mayor, he became the landscape and city planner for all the parks, including Denver Botanic Gardens, Cheeseman Park, and all so many. The founders of Cherry Hills Village hired him to be part of the planning of Cherry Hills Village, hence the big park in Sunset Homes, where that was originally developed. He says and emphasized the importance of legacy and offered this advice for future generations. "We must not stop in our planning for beauty. Our trees and parks and gardens must be renewed constantly if we are to leave a decent world for those who follow us. Now is the time to plan that world. The city grows so fast that will soon be too late if the opportunities for making it beautiful are not grasped now. An atmosphere of peace, an air of quiet, a simple footpath," and on and on it goes, "is a real godsend." So I say to you, it's incumbent upon the City Council to preserve and advance the legacy that was established by Kat Anderson, a gift horse in the mouth of no other land that is available, and it was given to the city. And I would like to say, I hope you will continue to establish for those who came before us and will continue after us. Thank you.
Very well said. Next is, is it Garrett Francis? You know you've been on City Council a long time when everybody that comes up is a familiar face.
It's kind of cool. Hi, guys, Garrett Francis, I live here in the Village. The last couple of years have been tough for a lot of folks. And a lot of people I talk to, their communities have been splintered, broken up. It's been hard. Cherry Hills is a really special place. And, you know, the farm over the last couple of years, I've volunteered at a lot of stuff. And it's been fun, lots of generations, lots of people coming together. And I think going forward, we're going to need places like the farm, a lot. So, I really hope you guys think about it the way that I do. I really want to get this done. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Kathy Crepo.
Well, you can tell I've been up here if you've said my name correctly. Two years ago, my husband addressed you about how important the farm was to all of us. And I, we were so excited after we realized that things had passed and it was going to be developed and we would all be able to use it. And we got a wonderful tour of the west side of the trail. And we're very excited to bring our family, and we have lots of grandchildren over there and show them, and it looked like there's some places in the backyard we could do some really fun things. And it was closed, and it's closed all the time. We use the trail every nice day there is, and it's just a little, it's sad. It needs to be opened up to all of us. There isn't a really, there is no reason not to have it open. And I would just like to ask you to do what was in the plan to start with and make it available for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. Klasina Vanderwerf.
Klasina Vanderwerf, 5250 East Shenango Avenue. Hello to our mayor, to council members, to our much-sought-after city manager, and to all our city staff. I want to direct my comments this evening to the proposal before the City Council from the Cherry Hills Land Preserve and to indicate why it is extremely important for the city to be in a full partnership with the land preserve. Not surprisingly, I'm going to begin with just a little history, with hats off to Dino for his book. When Quincy Farm came before those of us serving on City Council, we needed to approve the acceptance of the property. Several things went through all of our minds at that time. One, we knew that time and again Cherry Hills Village citizens had indicated how important open space was to them personally and for the character of the village. And we were amazed we were getting over 15 acres of prime real estate for next to nothing. Also, we were aware that this transaction was occurring against the backdrop of our exclusion from South Suburban Parks and Recreation. Because we realized Quincy Farm could be an answer to all those naysayers who complained that this is going to cost us more to use South Suburban Rec Centers, our answer to them was now we will have our own location where we can provide programs and classes more suited to what villagers actually prefer. We did not hesitate to accept Quincy Farm, even knowing that there would be costs associated with our acceptance due to a fair amount of delayed maintenance associated with the property. Some of us foresaw that we should not be expecting the city to take the role, on the role of program design, providing programs or program scheduling. The city did not have the staff for this. And we already had a nonprofit in our village that was willing and capable of shouldering this. And that was the Cherry Hills Land Preserve. Also, when the land preserve was created, one of the rationales for its existence was that a nonprofit organization could be much more attractive for citizens' charitable dollars than the city itself was. And experience has borne that out. Now, as I understand the proposal before you this evening, it says that the land preserve has accepted its responsibility to raise $150,000 toward improving the historic barn. So why should the city share in the financial responsibility for helping finance improvements to some of the structures on Quincy Farm? It's because these improvements will enhance programming and increase the benefits that come to our citizens. Opening the historic barn up to the public provides all kinds of opportunities, from bringing the history of the village to life, to giving children the chance to learn about and interact with animals. Cherry Hills Land Preserve has already proved its dedication to providing program on Quincy Farm. I want to relate an experience I had this summer at Quincy Farm. I attended the book discussion of Last Child in the Woods that was led by one of Kent Denver's biology teachers. By the way, for those of you who are not familiar with the book, it makes the case that children's experiences in the natural world and the association with nature contribute to children's mental, physical, and spiritual health. I attend a number of city functions and have come to know the regulars who go to these sorts of events. I expected to see all these same folks again. Much to my surprise, not only did 18 people show up for a book discussion, but I only knew about a third of them. I got to meet a ton of new people just by attending an event at Quincy Farm. Quincy Farm has indeed become what we all hoped it might be, part of the heart of the city, a gathering place for a city that has no post office, no restaurants, and no Starbucks. The land preserve's mission for Quincy Farm is to make it a wonderful viable asset for the city and all the villagers in it. The Cherry Hills Land Preserve Board and Staff have already spent countless hours improving the property, setting up for programs, and making these programs work, fundraising, giving their time, their talent, and their resources. We owe them our thanks. They deserve a full partnership with the city.
Thank you very much. I think next is Lisa Duke, is that right, Lisa?
For East Bellevue Place, Cherry Hills. So I've been in the Village for over 30 years, and my husband grew up on South Steel Street. And I'm mentioning this only because Kat Anderson was the one who encouraged his mother to donate this large to donate this large parcel of land that you see on the High Line Canal. And these decisions aren't taken lightly, having been involved in Charles's mother's decision. It's giving a lot of value of land, open space, and financial difference to those that might have inherited the property, to be quite blunt about it. But Kat wanted this property to be utilized for educational purposes, community building. My husband was part of the Pony Club. He reminisces, as do so many other people, about how important that was in his life. And unlike Denver, we don't have a lot of historic sites, and this is a jewel. And I think we really need to maintain it for generations to come. And I think if we don't, we would regret it. And we have to realize what Kat wanted. And already, we've seen such wonderful involvement this summer and this spring with the activities Ellen Thompson has put together. So I hope you do a good job in helping us maintain it.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kate Murphy, and I live at 1015 East Tufts Avenue here in the village. And I used to sit up there on, I served on the Parks, Trails, and Rec Commission for a couple of years, and I'll try to keep this brief because I know what it's like to be on that end. But I'm here tonight on behalf of Quincy Farm. I'm an ambassador for the farm, and I volunteer regularly. Ellen is a dear friend, and I think she's, what she's done as of late is incredibly commendable. Just the events that have been held in the last year since she took off, I'm going to say, office. But I volunteer on a regular basis, and I most recently helped with the Quincy Farm event on September 15th, which was a huge success. And there were so many people there that didn't even know that the farm really existed, or they didn't know the capacity to which the farm creates this environment for people to come together. And that night was something right out of like a Martha Stewart event. I mean, it was so beautiful and magical, the lights, the ambiance. You didn't even, you wouldn't even know where you were that night. It just was so incredible. And that night just really kind of resonated with me, the importance of this incredible gift that's been given to the village, and I hope that we continue to facilitate and foster. I also attended the book club by Richard Louv, The Last Child in the Woods, and that seemed like the most perfect setting for this book club gathering because we were talking about nature deficit disorder, which we all know is a huge, huge diagnosis. And, you know, as pediatricians will attest, I mean, there's, there's truly a nature deficit disorder amongst our youth, and, and just the importance of getting back into nature. And this farm allows for that. And I've been to events where we bring in the farm animals and the kids. There's been so many children in the village that have come, and it's like a little farm, a little, like a petting zoo almost with horses and sheep. And, and I just, it's just a magical place, and I hope that we continue to support it and recognize what it is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I think, I don't, I can't quite read the first name, but I believe it's a statement that Judith Judd is going to read on behalf of another person. Or speak, I don't know if you're going to read or speak, but...
I'm, I, it doesn't matter who I am. I'm, I'm reading for Cheryl Facilli, who, N. Al, and they live on Dahlia. And I am the humble surrogate for this. Sunday morning, Cheryl fell out of the, her hay loft, and she's in ICU in Swedish, and it looks like, at the moment, she's paralyzed. And she wrote this from her hospital bed tonight. And it was that important to her that her feelings about Quincy Farm get expressed. She says, "I had the opportunity to participate in the horsemanship event at Quincy Farm in September. We brought our two miniatures, the little, little horses, and Kate, you were there, to mingle with while also learning about horsemanship at the farm. It was wonderful to see the children learning about horsemanship and to see the smiles on all their faces as they petted, hugged, and braided the horses' manes. This was also an excellent opportunity for our minis, their first event out. Both are rescues and have been abused. The children learned the importance of being calm with them, and with them, and the minis and the children had a great time. I was so very proud of all." This is just one example of the wonderful events that are offered in our community. Providing an opportunity for our community to learn about animals and nature is, is so important today. The history of Cherry Hills Village is to maintain the semi-rural, rural character against changing economic trends. Quincy Farm is a perfect example of the history of the community that must be maintained and must be protected. And I just ask you all to lean in for Cheryl tonight.
Thank you. And please offer Cheryl the support of our community and know that we're, we're wishing her the best. Laura Smallen.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Great. Cheryl Facilli actually is my sister-in-law. So I had not planned on being here. I was going to be here tonight, and then when the accident happened, I hadn't planned on being here because we've been supporting our family. But one of the things that she asked me to do is to please come tonight. So I'm going to try to get through this. You know, about a month ago, Cheryl asked me to go to this event on horsemanship. So my husband and I went, and I was just captivated. And it wasn't only about the gentleman that was speaking on horsemanship, it was watching the interaction, the engagement, the kids, the adults. Everyone was so engaged. And if they weren't engaged with him, my neighbors were engaged with one another. They were talking. People were, as Judith had said, they were braiding the minis. Everyone, it was just such an incredible sense of community and such an amazing environment. And I was really, I was just so thrilled, and I felt so good. And, you know, today, we're all stressed, right? We have busy lives, we're parents, we're, we have our careers, kids, grandkids, we're all really busy. And it's so great to have a place where you can go. And I have a super busy life, and when I was there that day, I just felt not only the sense of community, but tranquility. And I mean that sincerely. It's just an amazing, amazing place. So we were excited about it, so we wanted to learn more. So we went and talked to Judith, and she explained the mission to us, and she explained about the money that needed to be raised. And I am proud and happy to say that my husband and I are, made a capital contribution of $30,000. And this is because we believe in this. This isn't just about the money, because I want to continue to help them achieve their mission. That's so important. I urge you, we can't do this without your support, so I'm asking you, please, for your support on behalf of my family, my sister-in-law, because I promised her I'd be really persuasive tonight. So, and, and the community. We need this, and we can't do this without you. So, thank you for your attention and your kind consideration.
Thank you. That is everyone who has signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is reports from members of city boards and commissions. Don't see any present. Then moving on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent, consent agenda?
Second.
The consent agenda has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to unfinished business, item 8A is the Cherry Hills Land Preserve 2024 Quincy Farm Annual Plan, and I'll turn it over to Manager Black.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. So tonight, we are presenting the four-year approval of the 2024 Quincy Farm Annual Plan. Ellen Thompson, the Executive Director of the Cherry Hills Land Preserve, will be presenting this item together with me tonight. So before we jump into the details about the annual plan, we wanted to take a brief recap of what we've accomplished this year. So as you'll recall, one of the major goals from the 2023 annual plan was opening the east side of the farm to public access. This has been a major milestone for the farm. We've received many visitors who've been delighted to see the property for the first time, and park staff has completed a significant amount of maintenance and improvement work on the east side this year in order to make the farm safe and beautiful for visitors.
So for Cherry Hills, hello, everyone. I'm Ellen Thompson. Accomplishments by Cherry Hills Land Preserves, Land Preserve. We'll start talking about programming, and I want to bring your attention to the statistic there. Very proud of this. In 2023, we had 823 attendees to our planned events, and that is double what we did in both 2021 and 2022. You'll also see we had 18 programs, more or less, the same as previous years, but we increased attendance dramatically. You'll also see in 2021, we did a lot of bee, bee events. I love bees, but eight is probably too many. This year, we did one bee event and had many new programs, many of which were already described by our guests earlier. So click on the photo gallery. Last time, I showed you some pictures, and that was more fun than just hearing words. So I want to talk about two of the events. This is from October 1st. We made some changes. This event used to be called Trail Walk, and now it is called Adventures in Nature. There was some concern that we'd lose attendees moving away from that name that was so well-known. We also charged a fee, and for the first time, to attendees. Well, both those things worked great. We had 214 attendees, similar to years past, and our show rate, those people who signed up and actually came, was 97%, which is unbelievable. And if you ask people to spend $5 a person, for some reason, they're going to show up because they paid something. So moving on to the next group of pictures, this is, we've talked about this several times, the horsemanship. This event was planned and executed by, in partnership with Pony Club, Platte Valley Pony Club, and the Village Club. And we had 80 people there. It was the most beautiful day ever. You can see in the picture in the bottom white, we had the first event ever in that back arena. We'd never done that before, and it was awesome. It was amazing looking back at the big barn from this view. So at this event, this is where we met Larry and Laura, and after one event, they became our major supporters financially. Okay, they're, they're gone. Next, if you scroll down just a bit, Emily, these are just some pictures from, from the barn party. And several of you went. It was magical, the lights, the lanterns, it was just a beautiful event. And these are all on our website. So going back to the presentation, Klasina did a, did a much better job than I would on that second bullet point. I just want to point out how many hours the CHLP board and all of our volunteers have put in, not just for putting on events and programs, but for the planning, strategizing, fundraising, and outreach. So I just want to thank the board and everyone who, who has worked so many hours on Quincy Farm. So in terms of outreach, this is a huge part of what we do, and this is what is driving all this awareness, engagement, participation in events, and, and really fundraising. And the first bullet point talks about the tours we gave. I've never thought of it this way, so I started calculating, how many did my, did I do and our board members? And we did over 50 scheduled individual tours with potential donors, with you all council members in the last couple of weeks, with experts like CSU Extension, History Colorado. And then we did, I did a ton of these, these drop-by tours. Whenever we had a program, we had a sign-out, people came in out of curiosity, and we gave them a tour. And it turns out, a lot of those people turned into attendees of future programs. The ambassador program was a big hit. We have 12 people. They did, several of them were here tonight, and, you know, they're our advocates essentially. And they did a great job with their neighborhood email groups saying, hey, we have an event at Quincy Farm, and that was very helpful. The barn party, so many, so many ambassadors helped that day, and that was a crazy day. In terms of email and print advertising, for seven months, we did three quarterly newsletters. And I'm very proud of that open rate. We, and the fall one, in October, we had a 56% open rate. And that is quite good compared to similar nonprofit organizations where it's typically 41%. So that shows engagement. And our unsubscribe lists are miniscule. They don't even exist. We did email campaigns, print ads, we printed thousands of barn party invitations, and we did posters. And the one on the right, that was new as of a couple of months ago. And that's, we, we swapped that out multiple times depending on the events coming up, and that turned out to be one of the best, most successful advertising tools because it got everybody to look at it who was walking up and down the High Line Canal. These are just some marketing samples. I don't know if you all see these. If you went to the barn party, the one on the left, that poster is all the history, the beautiful pictures when there was nothing, no buildings around on Quincy Avenue. And you can just, as you go across, these are all the different things we've done this year. And then in turn, next one, barn party and planning. So for the barn party, 225 people signed up, only 178 went. But if anyone recalls on that day, it was raining till 1 o'clock in the afternoon. So we were excited to even get the 178. And I'm happy I didn't get fired from my job for getting a truck stuck in the back pasture. I called Jim, almost crying, and I had to go home and send my husband in saying, call me when they've removed with the tow truck, the large truck with the tent. So anyway, it was a very exciting day. We raised, I forgot to add one thing. So we had $31,000 from the sponsors, $24,000 from ticket sales, and $11,000 from the silent auction. So all told, we raised $66,000 for our first one. That's, that didn't include, doesn't include the expenses, which were about $27,000. So we cleared, we netted $39,000. More than the money we raised, this year's barn party, so much of it was about awareness building. And like Kate Murphy said earlier, so many people are like, wow, where are we? This is incredible. In terms of planning, we've been working on this annual plan, it feels like forever. I think we started last March, and when Chris was here. And we recently created a roadmap. We've shared it with some of you. I know it's in your packet. Emily's going to talk about that in a minute. But we jointly developed that with, with the staff. Finally, Big Barn feasibility study was completed in September with Rogue Architecture. Cherry Hills Land Preserve funded that for $25,000.
So getting into the annual plan and vision roadmap, as Ellen was saying, in creating the 2024 annual plan, we realized it was important to do the planning for next year in the context of what the law... in the context of what the larger vision was for the property. So we worked together to create an additional document that's in your packets to provide context for how the plan for next year fits into the overall vision for the farm. So that roadmap provides a compass direction of where we're headed. It expands on the vision from the 2023 plan and solidifies the goals and strategies we'll use to get there. So this is our shared vision for the future that appears in your packets. Again, we've highlighted the key concepts here. I won't read the whole thing, but, so things like agricultural heritage, open spaces, the conservation values, and really creating a place that centers and enriches the Cherry Hills Village community. Within the roadmap, along with the vision, there are three key goals for the future. So the first is to provide daily public access, dawn to dusk, to Quincy Farm. The second, to provide programs, activities, events, and other uses consistent with the vision and conservation easement. And lastly, to carry out cost-effective site improvements to support programs, activities, events, and other uses at Quincy Farm. So that strategic roadmap provides us our direction. And then the 2024 plan includes specific projects that move us towards that shared vision. The plan contains three capital improvement projects, the most significant of which is rehabilitating the big barn. So the big barn is the largest structure on the east side. It's the signature recognizable building that visitors want to experience. The big barn has some structural issues that must be addressed in order to preserve it long-term and for future occupied use. So for the building to stay standing well into the future, we need to complete repairs to the roof, the roof structure, wall framing, and the electrical system. So this is the work that we're planning to complete in 2024. While we're addressing those issues during construction, we plan to create a small educational and gathering space at the front of the barn for the community to use. The historic character of the barn will be maintained through all of this planned work. The estimated cost of all repairs is $760,000. That number is including a 20% contingency. And as you've heard, CHLP's planned contribution is $150,000. So this is a top view of the plan from the feasibility study. Four stalls will be retained, and the walls enclosing the front area will be removed to create that small gathering space. This space can be used for different events and different configurations. So it can be used for the future, both by CHLP and the city, along with other organizations that align with the mission of Quincy Farm. The two other major capital projects planned for next year are improvements to the pond and replacement of the footbridge over the High Line Canal. So the plan for the pond is to dredge it, to make it deeper with less surface area. This will be better for wildlife and for water quality since we do use the pond for irrigation of the west side. Our engineering inspection of the footbridge from earlier this year concluded that the bridge should be replaced for safety reasons. So we plan to keep the very rustic feel of the bridge while replacing it with something that is safe and accessible for everyone. And then, in addition to those capital projects, we have many other planned initiatives for 2024. This list has not changed since the annual plan was first presented to council, so I won't go through them all. And I will let Ellen wrap it up for us.
Right, thank you. Before we get to questions, we have heard tonight from many, hello. We've heard tonight from many residents, and really throughout the summer, about how much they love Quincy Farm and why. Those reasons include, we love open space. We love the activities and the programs for ourselves and our families. We love the barn and the connection to that rural heritage and history, and the connection to horses. But there's unanimous agreement on one thing, and that is the sense of community that we all feel when we are in that very special place. So, you know, Kat Anderson had this, she had a wonderful life here with her family as a private resident. We spent the last seven months really increasing awareness and support of this property. And we really believe that it is the right time to begin to create something extraordinary for the benefit of all. And hopefully, this annual plan is the way to start doing that. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. If that concludes the presentation, I guess we'll start with questions. Does anybody have, wants to jump in? Any questions? Dan? Or I should say, Counselor Sheldon? Sorry, I'm so informal, I can't do it.
Dan is just fine. Well, thank you, thank you very much for the presentation and for gathering such a great group of people tonight to come in and speak. I think it's a testament to our community and to the work that the land preserve is putting in, gathering the support of the community. So thank you for doing that. I have had some discussions now with a few members of the land preserve. I was able to get a tour from former Mayor Christman recently. And it was really, it was really nice to be able to see the farm one-on-one and just be able to walk it outside of a formal function. I will tell council the same thing that I told Mayor Christman, and that is that I still struggled with the $150,000 match and that there was no formal commitment within this plan for that match. Just, there's a lot of little nuances in here where it says the land preserve will work towards gaining or gathering up that money. I think I've changed my tune tonight. And I think it's because of the outreach that you all did and the people you brought in. And I want to, I want to thank you for doing it because it's maybe brought me around to the point where I'm ready to take the leap of faith with you now. And tonight, when we go into our budget discussions, I'm going to be supporting the land preserve's allocation, sorry, the city's allocation of $610,000 for the big barn, irrespective of a formal commitment from the land preserve for the $150,000. Now, that's not letting the land preserve off the hook, and I know you all know that. But I'm pleased and confident that you've got the support of the community now. So thank you for that. Thank you very much for that. Couple other thoughts. The bridge, I guess, I was, I felt like that bridge, you could drive an Abrams tank over it. It doesn't seem to me that it, I'm not an engineer, but it did not seem to me that that bridge was in need of repair or better yet, replacement. I guess, maybe at some point, somebody can give me an update on that and maybe even take a look at that engineering report because it seemed like that was a pretty stout structure. And I guess, if it is in need of replacement, why is it still open? I don't know if we want to discuss that right now. Okay. But, anything else? I think my final... I was blown away by the amount of detail that you went into in the report, in the annual plan. Blown away. And the cost estimates that you got from A.D. Miller and the engineers and the drawings and everything you've done, I was super pleased to see it all. So kudos to you and the whole team. My final comment is, I hope, I know you will, but I hope that next year, you guys look at the calendar for the Jewish holidays when...
I already know, I already know when it is.
Okay.
We're so good there, Dan.
Because I would have very much liked to have been there.
We're so fine.
But I'm sure some of our other council members, so. Anyway, great job. Looking forward to supporting you in 2024. Thanks.
Rob?
I think we're going to be cumulative, probably, in incorporating each of our comments from those who've come before us. So fabulous job, I think. For the record, I'd just like to say, many, most everybody knows this. You certainly do already. My sister was a pony clubber who grew up riding at the property. Spent a lot of time there, certainly knew and learned an awful lot from Kat Anderson. The one thing that I would tell you that came from all of her involvement was that she learned an awful lot about individualism, a lot about responsibility, and a lot about really, really hard work. So from the standpoint of doing programming, while I like the idea of having animals come in, I would really like to try and emphasize that programming include things about what it was really like back in farm days, how hard it was, how it was not easy to be a farmer, and the importance of the water that made things all go. I think that would provide our community with a great deal of respect for what it was that I think Klosina talked about or one of the public commenters talked earlier about, about the people who came before us and what duty we have for the people who come after us. I would also like to mention a little bit about the idea that, you know, we heard an awful lot about community center, that it's a, the opportunities that the farm has for being a gathering spot. When we did this park, we thought similar types of things. There's nothing wrong with having more than one community area for lots of different people and lots of different activities. Activities that can take place there are different than the ones that can take place here. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the community to come together. The third and final piece that I guess I would go to is a little bit from the standpoint of, a comment in the report is that you rely upon Kent for parking. I would like to see an effort to de-emphasize the importance of parking in any way so that people who can come get used to the concept of walking, biking, whatever other method there is, that eliminates the need for a formalized parking. There is probably no place in the village that's more than three and a half miles as the crow flies from this property. And the ability for people to get there in alternative methods is, I think, a great opportunity for understanding exactly what the farm life used to be like. Finally, while I certainly want to express thanks to the people at Kent for their graciousness in continuing to let us have parking there, I do think that we, as a village, need to understand that we're a mere hop, skip, and a jump here. And if it means shuttles that go up to the property for functions, that this is an emphasis. I just think that we don't want to abuse the relationship with Kent, nor do we want to become dependent upon a relationship with Kent when we have alternatives for things that can serve everything that we need to do at the property. So my only comment is, I would try to de-emphasize that part of the annual plan and maybe even rewrite this as Kent is an option, but not that we rely upon Kent. Other than that, I guess my closing comment would be is, as many know, I was on PTRC for 10 years before coming to council. Since we've had the property, we haven't really spent any money on the barn. So when I look at a large capital expense or a large capital expense for the entire property, not just the barn, we have done an awful lot of daily maintenance and tree things, but we haven't done a lot of capital improvement costs. And when Klosina mentioned earlier tonight that it was paired and looked at by former council members as a, as a method to offset a little bit of the lack of services or the loss of services that we were going to have when we exited South Suburban, I do think that between the parks budget and the money that we are no longer spending for South Suburban, coupled with the fact that good things take money, we fortunately have money. I think Quincy Farm is a fabulous use of our parks money. And I support the annual plan and think that, you know, it's an opportunity for continued growth in community. So I'm all on board for our, this year's annual plan and look forward to expanding it even further. I know there are, you know, issues that we as council are working on to address some of the legal questions, I guess, involving the property. Threat not, those are going to get reserved, resolved, one way or the other. And this is a fabulous property that, like I say, my sister rode there. I came by all the time. The list of EBR knowledges that we're going to try and get for the record for Quincy Farm is long. So thank you.
Thank you. Earl?
Rob said the comments would be cumulative. Mine probably won't be. I do have some questions. Laura would be disappointed if I didn't. But let me just say, one of the, one of the comments that you made, one of the reasons that we haven't spent a lot of money on Quincy Farms is because of the lack of access to the property by our citizens, which has been rectified in the last year, and we hope to rectify it more so next year. And that's, that's a big deal. You can't spend taxpayer money. You can. Some may think I would, that it's inappropriate to spend taxpayer resources on an asset that the taxpayers aren't allowed to enjoy. That was a big accomplishment in the last year, was getting that east side open. The work that's been done by the land preserve and staff with regard to that east side is incredible. And I think it's, I mean, it's amazing how it looks. The barn party, you know, there was always that old saying, when you move, the best way to get your boxes unpacked is to throw a party. I kind of feel like that's what happened. I mean, I set foot on there, and I'm like, what's happened here? In fact, part of me was saying, maybe it looks too good. You know, we're trying to raise money here. But it really, it really was, and it was a fabulous event. I said at the last presentation, whenever that was, a couple of months ago, the work that's been done by the land preserve in terms of the programming, the courses, the programs that have been shown, it's just been amazing. And the attendance has been amazing, as we've heard tonight. Rob is right that, you know, we are working to make sure that we can have the entire farm open for all of our residents. And in that regard, I'd just make a comment to our city attorney and city manager. I believe that we should duplicate the tape tonight of the comments that were made here by our citizens here tonight, get that to our attorney at a minimum, and talk about when we might use it in other purposes. All of these comments show the passion of our community. And more importantly, almost everything that you heard from that diocese tonight, in terms of what it meant to the community, what they want to use it for, how they want to use it, are all consistent with the conservation easement. And obviously, they were unrehearsed. I mean, it's just, it's from the heart, so I'm hoping that we do do that. I do have a few questions. One of the things that wasn't curious, and it's come up, you've used it several times tonight, a small area in front of the barn for educational gathering. The whole, why isn't the whole barn going to be utilized? I mean, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, I can, two things. The whole barn will be utilized. One will be a gathering space, but the stalls themselves will be available as well.
Right.
One is reserved for a horse or, so it'll continue, I suppose you could put a horse in the improved stalls, but kind of messy. Goes to Rob's thing about having somebody clean it up. But, so the stalls will be used. And they may have different displays in them. They may have different groups that go in, like pony club may, may do something in them. So the whole barn will be used, but the gathering place, where it's, you know, you can have arts and crafts and speakers, will be the small area in the front of the barn.
Okay. I figured that that was the case, but that word "small" kept popping up in the front of the barn. And I'm like, I understand that's where we're going to knock out some walls and do some things. But the whole barn will be utilized at the end of the day.
The whole barn. My horse has its own stall.
Terrific. One of the other things I noted in there, Ellen, I noticed, you know, the metrics for the programs. Besides the attendance, I didn't, what other kind of metrics did you utilize? Because you said you used them to talk about, engage the interest of the community and what have you. I was interested in what those might have been and/or... I was interested in what those might have been and/or what you learned from, from, from that.
Well, we, let me think about the programs. I looked at who came, what kinds of people, were they families and adults? We also put the, put into categories, you know, this is the heritage history, those are the horse, and the, and then the other ones were, you know, nature and sustainability. So we did look at kind of how they fell out and where we think there are some gaps for next year. What else did I do in terms of metrics? Oh, one of the biggest is where they live. And so we have a new system, our data, our donor management system really helps me, that's where everyone registers, you all have done that yourselves, and there is an address. And so really interesting, for example, in the adventures in nature, I think we got more, we charged a fee, and I believe we got more Cherry Hills Village people than before. And adventures in nature was 49.9% Cherry Hills. And then it was so interesting to see the pockets where it's from. So, you know, that one area north of Hamden that feeds into Cherry Hills Village Elementary, Gerard Place, that, there's a big group of people there, some in Greenwood Village. So, so that, that was actually very interesting metric to see, who is coming to, because this is not just for the residents of Cherry Hills, but we do want a very large percentage to be those people.
One of the things, obviously, now, obviously, but one of the things I saw in your proposals is obviously, for fundraising purposes, naming rights, which I think is a great idea at the end of the day, but presumably, you're going to make a proposal about that to us at some point?
Yes, it's almost ready. We're, we, it, we have a couple more meetings to get the language, and it's a proposal.
Right.
And we have the, Laura, great name, who already came up to speak, they have signed a pledge agreement for $30,000 in exchange for naming rights on a stall. And that is, of course, subject to this being approved.
Right.
And, you know, barn getting built and et cetera. But, and this is, you know, kudos to the many people who have been involved in this and the board, is that there is trust in this board that it'll get done, and that's how that pledge came in, and to Dan's point, we're pretty darn confident that we can meet that number.
And I think you can, too. I mean, I've always felt confident that you can. Once you got out there and started doing the things that you're doing, your outreach programs and what have you, and I'm liking what I'm hearing, that's what I wanted to make sure of, is that, you know, to do the certain things, the, the level of contribution is, is high enough. We've got a couple of former independent school directors on here, are used to naming rights, and we know what that means, so that's a, I'm looking forward to seeing the proposal.
... to somebody that decided that was...
I'm one that thought we should have gone out and gotten, named this for something, picked up some dough.
We'd just be undoing it in 50 years.
Yeah, well, the other thing which, and I like, I like the fact that you, you know, tried to clarify a bit more on the vision, that is something that we talked about last time, and the mayor said, "Hey, we as a council need to, as a council, sit back and say, 'We support this vision.'" Okay? I mean, formally, because each year, you're going to come forward with annual plans, and it's inappropriate, or not, not appropriate, I guess, in my view, to allow you to keep going, so, and developing annual plans, as well as with staff. I mean, obviously, again, because this is, these are staff, land preserve plans, without saying, "Hey, the direction you're going in is the right direction." I like that vision. The one thing I'm curious about is, is, so you're going to assess the main residents this year, what is, what is your time, that's what it says.
It should say, we will assess, this year, the 2024 plan will be assess Hopkins, the use of Hopkins. The vision is to assess, but that's not in 2024.
Earl, it's in the roadmap document.
Okay.
And it says, assess the strategic relevance at some point, and it's not in...
All right, well, what point are you planning on doing that? Staff, what do you got to, because I just want to say right now, I mean, you know, again, and it's controversial, it's probably the only controversial thing, other than opening up the west side, which we know where that stands at the end of the day. I'm wanting to say right now, that house just needs to go. And I like the vision with regard to, that was always kind of out there, which is to make that into and continue to expand the natural area and open space at that point in time. There are other views on this council, I know, but at some point, we need to be, we need to be moving ahead with that, because...
Yeah, Earl, let me just, this is the Laura Crisman response to this, not a board response, as I've not discussed this with the board. I, I do believe that it's, we get the barn done, we all get the barn done, and let me take a minute to say that Emily, Jay, and Jim have been fabulous and a pleasure to work with. But then we'll know what is the community use of that, you know, how much does the community use it, what are the uses? Then we get to the Hopkins house, try to figure that out, what are the uses? What are the cost-effective uses? How is this going to be done? That then gives you the information to make a more cost-effective decision on the Anderson house. You know, what is it going to cost vis-à-vis what are the prospective uses? What does the, now that the Hopkins house is, you know, has been considered, the barn has been considered, it is a balancing. I don't think you can really make that decision well, you make the decision until you at least know how the barn's going to get used by the community. And is it, is there a demand beyond that? And if there's a demand beyond that, or a different type of demand, it is to inform that decision process. So that's kind of the answer to your question.
Okay, well, and I appreciate that, and that all makes perfect sense. You know, when you say one can't, maybe it's just my trading background and instinct, sometimes you go with your gut. That house, we're never going to spend the money on that house to rejuvenate it. That's just never going to happen. How do I say "never"? Someone will say, "You can't say that, Earl, you don't know that it wouldn't happen." I'll say it the same way that I said on the cell phone, going, "I think it's going to be two and a half million bucks." That's, that's just what I think at the end of the day, and I think we just need to move forward and get going. The Hopkins house has to stay, it's historic, and it's a cool house, anyway, and the point is, is that, but that's just my view, I'm throwing it out, I think we need to be getting forward with that sooner rather than later. But beyond that, the plan that you put together in conjunction with staff and that staff worked on is terrific. Very supportive of, very supportive of this. And the work that the land preserve has done over the last year since the last plan, as well as what staff has done, has been tremendous. And this is, as we've said many times, a crown jewel in Cherry Hills, and we're just continuing to shine up that jewel, and it's sparkling more and more every day. So thank you so much for the work that you're doing. Thanks to staff, Emily in particular, Jay, everybody on parks, I mean, it's, it's been, it's been terrific what's, what's been done, so really, really appreciate it.
Randy, you look like you're up next.
Thank you. On a personal note, thank you for the time and the, and the effort to show us around the farm. It was really, really informative. I think I had a whole, a deeper understanding of the farm and the opportunities, just going over there in a more quiet setting and, and actually seeing and chatting and, and all that, so that was very good. Certainly, the impression I, I had as well was, you know, while we're talking about a plan, and it's tempting to look forward, it's evident that there's a lot of progress that's already been made on the property, bringing it around, and, and sure, a lot more to go, but at the same time, thank you for all the good work that's been done. And then when I think about the plan, I, it, you know, having gone through a number of planning cycles in my life, I think about the amount of time and effort that have, have been put in by yourselves, by the staff, by volunteers, to make that plan a reality. That's a quality piece of work, and it speaks to the commitment that folks have and that the, the land preserve and staff have toward making this a success. So that all feels good. I think the tectonic plates are more aligned than they've ever been when it comes to clarity of vision for the farm, clarity of vision, you know, working with Colorado open lands, and so from my perspective, I am ready to move forward and make this, help you guys make this a success.
Oh.
We haven't, I haven't been here as long as Rob, but he's probably written up in that book. But what I do want to say is that about two or three years ago, Mike Gallagher, Jay and I went and toured the farm, and at that point, nothing was going on. I mean, it was, everything was a status quo then, and the progress, when we went there a couple of weeks ago, it's, it's amazing what's happened in the last two years, really the last year, basically, to see the progress, and very impressive, very supportive of what you're doing. And I think the community's support is, is very impressive, that the community's in, in support of it. My, and I raised this when we were sitting there enjoying the exterior of the barn, that one of the things that Mike Gallagher and I and Jay talked about, it goes back to three years, was the west side and the main house, and I think Earl brought it up also, that it would be such a great open space if that were not there and expensive maintaining it. And I know you guys are doing a little research into it, but as I expressed that day when we were there, to me, that is something that, as you take the next step after this, is something that really needs to be looked into. And I think both from an economic standpoint of maintaining that versus opening that whole space up to be a beautiful open space, that, I think somebody said earlier tonight that we do need open space, they're always impressive with that. So again, you've got my support, I appreciate all the work you've done, and to see the, where we've come from in two years, when Mike, Jay, and I toured it to where we are today, it's very impressive.
Susan?
Thank you. First, congratulations. I think the annual plan looks, looks very good. I really like the roadmap with tying the different strategies to the vision and the key steps underneath. I think that's a great piece of work, and you've done a lot of great work on programming and fundraising. I have, I have a little bit of anxiety over the amount of money that we're spending on the farm this year, just as a percentage of the budget, it, I feel like we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to make sure that we're spending taxpayers' money appropriately. The fact that you guys have, have agreed to raise a portion of that money makes me feel a lot more comfortable. Also, all the detail that's in, in the report on the work that needs to be done to the barn. I'd like to ask, what future expenses are we anticipating with the barn? One thing I would suggest that might be added to the annual plan, I realize it's an annual plan, but it would be good if we had some kind of a roadmap for future big expenses out, I'm not, I'm not talking mowing and regular maintenance, but capital expenditures are big expenses that we anticipate will be coming down the line, because I, I will, I will have more heartburn if next year, you come back and say, "Well, and now we need a million dollars to do this." And I, I fully expect there will be other big expenses, especially given the three old houses, right? Some of them older than others. And I actually love the Kat Anderson house, so if there were a way to save it, I would be thrilled by that, but that's not an issue for us to discuss tonight. But, but I would like to know, are there other big expenses that we're expecting in the next couple of years? And Emily, maybe you have that information, maybe?
I think that that's something we can certainly work together to put together for council, but that's, the scope of the 2024 plan was just next year, so the roadmap exercise was really for us to put that in context, but I'm sure we can work together with the land preserve, and we'd be happy to put together more of a long-range anticipated forecast for council to give you an idea of where this fits in.
And Susan, if I may, this was the first step, this roadmap, in terms of the concepts. We know the next steps are some type of budget that go with it, just, just broad stroke, high level, we think Hopkins house is going to be X. And so we have talked about that as the next step for the roadmap document, you know, timeline to some degree, and, and costs.
And then I would just like to close out and say, first of all, I want to echo the thanks that have already been given to everyone, land preserve, staff, et cetera, but I'd also like to add, to anyone who might be out there watching, thanks to the numerous committees and people who came before, who had great challenges, have led us to this point. I am so delighted that we're finally able to, to move the ball forward significantly, but I, I acknowledge that that was not without a lot of very diligent and extremely frustrating at times work, times worked by community, members of our community who kind of came before. So thanks to all of you out there who might be watching or listening. I really love that the vision has, has been, I, I understand the way the vision was done in the initial annual plan last year, and I do think it helped kind of paint a picture and helped people imagine what it could be like. I do like this vision being a little more broad and allowing us to incorporate those different elements, and I agree with Susan, I would love to see the Anderson house remain as a community, a larger community event space. I think that is something that's really lacking in our community, but that's just my opinion. There, I want to make two very specific comments. Lest there be any doubt, the city of Cherry Hills Village is 100% committed to upholding the conservation easement in both the letter and the spirit. We are 100% committed to that. We are also working very diligently, and it occurs to me that maybe people in our community don't see this, the council is working very diligently to ensure public access to this property. It is intricate, I guess I would say, it's an intricate process, and so, you know, there's, there's not a lot of information forthcoming, and there's no signs that we can point to, and we can't point to beautiful new gates, so it's not very visible. But I want everyone who spoke here tonight to know that we agree that this is a jewel for this community, and we are doing everything in our ability to make it, you know, to ensure that the public has the highest use and benefit of this land. So I, I also just want to finally say that I agree with, with Councilor McGuire, that it is a significant amount of money, and it's a big jump over one year. What I have said now for probably 10 years is that, and to kind of echo Councilor Holland's point as well, I can't justify spending that kind of money unless there is a significant public benefit. And what I have witnessed over the last even six months, I think Klosina said it the best when she attended an event, I was at the barn party, was talking to a longtime volunteer that I served on the Parks Trails and Recreation Commission with, someone who's lived in this community for years and has been actively involved, and she looked at me and said, "I don't know anybody here." It's an entirely new generation of Cherry Hills Village community members, and there, there are some older timers sprinkled throughout, there, the horse event was multi-generational. The horse event was multi-generational. There were grandparents. There were little kids. There were young families. There were people and kids in strollers. It is reaching parts of our community that we have not been able to reach in the past. And so I am seeing the benefit for our, to our community that I think we all believed was there. I think we're starting to see it actually happen. And that, in my mind, is worth a significant investment. Parks and open space is always at the top of the list for Cherry Hills Village residents. And I don't think there is any other piece of open publicly owned land in this community that creates more community and value than Quincy Farm. So. With that, is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the 2024 Quincy Farm Annual Plan and direct staff to work with the Cherry Hills Land Preserve to carry out the plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, the reason you're all here, item 9A, the 2024 proposed budget. Close the doors. Don't let anybody leave.
Before we get on to the budget, Laura, our, on this side, our monitors are out and Randy keeps going in and out. And with the budget coming up, my guess is there's going to be a lot of slides we're going to want to really look at here. But thank you all for coming.
Yeah, let's, we'll take a five-minute break while we address the technical concerns and other concerns. We're taking it out of here. Okay. Let's try to bring this back to order. I know we still have quite a bit of an agenda to get through. What? I know. I guess they weren't here to hear the budget after all.
I'm sure there's a long signup sheet for this. Laura, how many pages do you have?
All right. Moving on to our discussion of the 2024 proposed budget. Director Farman.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Tonight is the City Council's review and discussion of the first reading of two council bills. One to adopt the 2024 budget and levy property taxes, and the other council bill authorizing city appropriations for 2024. Since this is a public hearing, I will briefly review some previous information. I'll probably gloss over this pretty quickly. So council can ask me any questions and interrupt me if needed. The city's largest fund, of course, is the general fund. It receives two-thirds of the city's revenues and pays for 47% of its expenditures. For 2024, the proposed budget includes a revenue estimate of 12.1 million and planned expenditures of 8.5 million, which is roughly flat compared to 2023. The resulting ending fund balance in 2024 is 22.5 million. The general fund's largest revenue source is property taxes at 3.7 million, or 30% of the total fund revenues. The mill levy is proposed to remain flat in 2024's collection at 14.722 mills. And the general fund expenditures are comprised of these major functions, which include public safety and public works, totaling 62% of total fund expenditures. Here are four broad general fund highlights in next year's proposed budget. We have an aggressive capital improvement program, but with the volume of projects scheduled next year, we do remain confident in all of their completion if the design and permitting plans move forward without issues. And another major highlight, I'll talk in a little bit more detail, is our insurance costs. And we do have our health insurance premiums established now. Here are our departmental highlights. The administration department includes finance, sales tax, city clerk, community resources, city manager, municipal court, village crier, and IT. The health insurance and non-sworn retirement are also centrally budgeted in this department. Oops, sorry about that. Lively buttons. We do have our budget increases outside of compensation. $37,000 is for property and liability insurance, and $126,000 is for health insurance. And $25,000 is for county fees for motor vehicle use tax and property tax collections. We do have our health insurance premiums established now. Medical premiums are rising by close to 10%. We did budget for 11% increase. And our dental premiums will increase by 7%. We have 5% in the proposed budget. So we are comfortable, we are within those budget amounts next year, which also leaves a little bit of room for any employee that wants to add coverage next year. And community development, we've talked about our building permit activity, which continues to be strong. And we did increase the planning review services to meet that activity, which we feel might slightly decrease next year, but still be a strong volume. The public safety department includes many budget highlights. There is one additional school resource officer working at the Kent Denver School. And those costs will be fully reimbursable by the school. We also have an agenda item tonight on firemen and police pension, FPPA migration. But we do have the funding in the budget for next year. And police department will also pursue law enforcement accreditation. And lastly, staff is recommending eliminating the city's requirement for an annual security alarm permit fee, which will be on the fee resolution, I think, in December. But that revenue is $34,000 and the city feels like we want to incentivize homeowners to set their alarm and also not to have the burden of the permitting. We do have a recent request from the police chief to add an additional $25,000 for revenues and expenditures related to donations. We do have $25,000 in the proposed budget, and he would like to add another 25 for the second and final reading. So that would be $50,000 in revenues, $50,000 in expenditures that he expects the city to receive next year. Another item that came in this last week was the dispatch services that we have with the county. We have a contract there and that is rising by another $9,000 that was not in the proposed budget. So we would like to add that going into the second reading. And in public works, a vehicle tracking system is planned for 2024 to communicate with the community. And that would show where snowplows and sweepers are on streets and when those snowplows might reach their own individual street. And then Public Works will also be busy next year managing those projects outlined in the capital improvement program. Just going over the city's capital fund, council has seen this before, so I won't go into a lot of detail. We do have our normal street improvement program. We also have two Public Works dump trucks planned for replacement next year. And an additional item that is in this proposed budget first reading, we've added $100,000 to Public Works projects for any preliminary work that council would support on possible cellular improvement project planning, which might include community surveying, modeling, any legal services, and public outreach. And here is the Parks Department and also ARPA, plan projects for next year. We've talked about the Quincy Farm projects earlier this evening. And then we have the American Rescue Plan Act, where we have 1.3 million remaining from those grant funds. And there are four planned projects for 2024, which, one would be electronic vehicle charging stations of 250,000, and two, Public Works electric vehicles. And then we have some Highline Canal infrastructure improvements planned for 650,000, and Public Works building improvements at 250,000. Another major city operating fund is the Parks and Recreation Fund. That fund does receive a little bit over half of the property taxes that the city receives. And that fund also utilizes eight full-time employees and five seasonal employees. They will also incur similar insurance impacts that the general fund receives next year. And we talked about the capital purchases for the Parks Fund. And the projected ending fund balance is just under $2 million in the Parks and Recreation Fund. The Conservation Trust Fund are restricted state lottery proceeds. And the city generally uses those for asphalt trail maintenance, overseeding and restoration of bridle trails. And then the city also has restricted funds from Arapahoe County Open Space. There's a quarter percent sales tax that the city receives, and that's to fund existing park and trail improvements. And for next year, we have $55,000 planned for trailer repairs and also extending irrigation along the Highline Canal in order to plant some additional trees. And the open space funds also are planned to supplement the stadium district funds that have come into the city for Dahlia Park Play Rocks. For the city's other budgeted funds, the Catherine Anderson Land Donation Fund, we have a proposed budget of 213,000. $74,500 is for Quincy Farm Maintenance and Operations. We talked about $122,000 toward the land preserve annual plan. And at the end of 2024, the land donation plan, donation fund will be almost fully depleted at 35,000 ending fund balance. The city does have a proprietary fund, which is the water and sewer fund, which accounts for expenditures related to the consolidation of that water and sewer system within the city's responsibilities. And we have some sewer line repairs related to Martin Lane planned for next year. We have three requests that would be in consideration for funding to be added to the proposed budget for council consideration. And if you concur, we can add these requests to the second reading. We, the city just received approval on a $50,000 grant. And that would be for electric, electric parks, small equipment. So EV parks, small equipment, and the city would fund $15,000. So a total of $65,000 would be budgeted. And that would be also a transfer from the Parks and Recreation Fund. We talked about the $25,000 for public safety, and there's $9,000 for the dispatch services.
Sorry, the public safety. That's for additional donations. So they're basically saying we're going to receive more in donations and we'd like to be able to spend it.
Exactly. And then before, in previous years, we would receive those donations, but we wouldn't have the spending authority from council. So that just evens that out. And we do have two items for recommended motions, but I can answer any questions about the proposed budget.
Doug, quick question on this EVs.
Oh, hold on. Sorry. I need to, I forgot to open the public hearing. So the budget is a public hearing. I will now call the public hearing to, or open the public hearing at 8:10 p.m. at eight-ten P.M. Now, please.
Doug, quick question on those EV charging stations. I know we're getting some installed here through a grant. Where, the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, where are those going to be at?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, I think Jay, Public Works Director Jay Goldie can answer that one.
So that's a placeholder right now. Chief Lyons and I are working with XL, actually we're working with city attorney to get our agreement together with XL. They're going to do a review of our fleets. So they'll put trackers on our fleets. We'll know how many miles each day those vehicles go, where they go, that type of thing. And then, once we figure all of that out, the next step is XL will help us with what charging stations do we need at the police station for going towards electric vehicles and those costs associated with that. So right now, it's a placeholder to hopefully fund that infrastructure charging. So as we do slowly bring on some electric vehicles, we already have the infrastructure for the police to utilize those.
So it's got nothing to do with the charging stations here?
No, those, those are ordered. They should be in in the next few weeks, and that's fully, will be complete in 2023.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Since around electric vehicles, one of the things I wanted to talk about, dear to your heart, but we've got electric vehicles in there as, and I think when I talked to you guys about it, it was kind of like, you know, this is a test case, as opposed to, because council, to my knowledge, hasn't authorized, we're not switching to electric vehicles at this point. We want to get more information. Is that correct?
I think the chief was researching that, wasn't he?
Well, no, that's, that, these aren't police vehicles. He's, he's doing that kind of on a separate thing. These are, these will be, you know, yeah.
Like public workers.
Regular, no, 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 not charging vehicles.
Code enforcement.
One, what, we put them both in Public Works. One would be for the right-of-way manager. One, we would take the, one of the code trucks that is newer, but not as useful because of their operations have changed. We would give them an electric vehicle to, so the police can use that and administratively use it and see how they like it, and the same with the one we get for Public Works. It will be available for admin staff also.
And that's kind of what I wanted to get to, which is, again, because this is kind of a test to gain information. So the point is, is that we will, if it was me, I'd like to see it developed before we actually commit to the purchase of the vehicles, but certainly concurrent with that, a evaluation program. We know what we're going to be looking at. We've got a formal evaluation program in place that is going to provide us with information, you know, as opposed to, geez, they, you know, they kind of worked, you know, more or less they worked. I mean, we're going, we're going to have, we're going, because that's what this is about, is to gain that information for then future councils to decide, hey, this makes some sense, why don't we go with it, type thing. So, I mean, and really, this is more of a thing for my council members, because in the absence of that, I'm not for this. I am for that if we're doing it that way. So I'm hoping that everybody will kind of agree to that, et cetera. And they can talk about it when you get to your questions. I'm curious, why does the budget for the Bellevue median removal, why is it still budgeted at the higher cost when we know it's going to cost less? We've got a contract at less.
That, that's my fault. I didn't go there and change that. We're, we're hoping to get that done this year, but weather and those type of things, CDOT, that we have to work with, that should be, well, but I'm, we don't, there's a lot of unknowns.
Oh, is there?
Working in the CDOT right-of-way.
All right.
So we'd like to keep that there just in case. We hope to be completely done with it, and we can put it back into the capital.
Good. That, that makes sense. On the stormwater, you know, again, we're going to appropriate that amount of money by passing it in the budget, but we're not going to, we're not going to go forward and spend that money until we know we've got the contract resolved with Arapahoe County. Right?
Highline Canal.
Highline Canal?
Yes, that's correct.
The, and I guess we will probably talk about that to a certain extent. I mean, and I agree, the amount of money that's budgeted in capital is a lot this year, and there's a lot for Quincy Farms, which I think is a good expenditure. But for instance, if I knew we were going to go down hard on access to the west side, I'd really struggle even spending that money on the east side, even though the argument can be made, well, we got access to the east side, so why not spend the money on the east side? That would have an impact on me. And I was going to ask that question at the time. I'm just curious, what, what kind of is the schedule to start committing to spend money on the barn retrofit for next year?
We would commit right away to the actual construction documents as soon as January one rolls around.
That's thirty, forty, fifty thousand bucks.
No, that's about seventy-two thousand.
Seventy-two thousand, right.
So yes, that would be a real early commitment to get those plans, hundred percent CDs to get it out to bid by March or April.
And, and then you'd be looking at letting a contract for the construction.
Yeah.
Over the, over the summer.
Yeah, over the summer.
So there are still, and I tend to always be one that, you know, you don't want to waste money, but construction drawings, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, you know, if you don't use them today, you could use them, you know, you could use them next year, type of a thing. So I'm less concerned about that. I am concerned about the big dough being spent before we start getting input. Seems like that gives us enough, we're going to get enough time to at least get a sense of here in the next few months and be out in front of that. So that's just, just passing along, that's one of my concerns. The other thing, which, you know, it's a minor thing here, and it's not a lot of money, but it's written this way in there, we want to extend the dais because we're having a hard time viewing. I can't get behind that and won't get behind that. But in conversation with the city manager, it was, hey, we're really kind of crowded up here, and we really need a little more room to be doing what we want to do at that point in time. I can get behind that. So if that's the reason we're extending the dais is to eliminate the crowding, I can't get behind it just because we can't see each other. That's, that's, that's a waste of money.
Yeah. It's, it's both of those items. So I can tell you.
We're doing it for the crowding, but we have the ancillary benefit of being able to see people.
But, yeah, we do tend to overlap quite a bit.
I didn't even know Paul was here.
I, I sit back, I sit back and think about what we did in the old city hall, what we did and didn't do and saw and couldn't see and.
You could see everybody in that.
Yeah, you could see everybody, but there's a lot of things that are wrong. It's just, but the point is, is, hey, it's a crowding thing. We don't have the ability to be able to maneuver as well as we need to, to make our staff functional.
The good news on that end is that we are getting some preliminary bids that are much lower than what we put in the budget, so that's good news.
All right. That's, I like that. Let's see. The only other thing is, is I did notice in the, the update, the work, the work plan, what was accomplished, and then what, and then what's going to be accomplished for next year, and in the code sections, you know what I'm going to say? Where do we stand on that drone update on the code?
Drone?
Yeah.
Next video.
Okay, well, I didn't, I never look at that.
Fourteen days from tonight.
Okay, great. That sounds good. But I mean, oddly, it wasn't in, you know, the work plan, it's a, that is a great accomplishment work plan, both for 2023 and for 2024, but I was surprised I didn't even see it in there. So, anyway. And then the one last thing, and I could be off on this, although I don't think I am, but I could be, but Doug, on your page two, this really doesn't matter, but it is a summary. I think in your, in your revenue summary in capital, the one point six eight million is showing that as a revenue coming in, I think that's double counting. I think that number should be zero point four nine five, which is the amount of money that's coming over from, from generated new from Parks and Rec. But the rest of it is just coming from Parks and Rec and really isn't new revenue, because you show the revenue figure for Parks and Rec at three point nine two million, which is the money coming in. So, and so never know mine, but just for you guys' purposes, if you're looking at it going, hey, we're pulling in eighteen point two three million, I don't think so. I think we're pulling in seventeen point two three million of revenue, of dollars coming into the city that weren't here before. That's what I think.
Not including taking from one pocket and putting in the other?
Yeah, I mean, well, you know, you take from this pocket, nothing new came into the city. I mean, you know, the gazinzas and the gazatsas, I mean, you know, there's a bucket, and it's like, what is the bucket? I mean, that's what I think.
It's interfund transfers, and we're required to budget for those, so they are appropriations. But you're also budgeting for that capital expenditure, so you're really double budgeting. But that is a requirement. So that is on the, on the revenue side and the expenditure side is a transfer from.
No, 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 I get that. I get that. All I'm saying is, is that I think, I think if somebody was looking at this, they'd go, wow, the city will be getting eighteen point two three million dollars of dollar bills flowing into the city this year, and I don't think that's true. And I think that's what people would think when they look at that.
Right. One point two million is a transfer, so we're just moving it from one fund to another.
Yes, I think that's it.
No, 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 I get that. I just, you know, and I guess I didn't, I mean, you guys all knew that. You obviously decided that we had eighteen point two million.
Well, I mean, I wasn't going to say it.
Good catch, Earl. Hey. I'm pointing it out just, just for my fellow council members, I mean, and everybody else, I mean, you know, because that is the deal, which is we're, we're spending because of our capital, we're spending, you know, more money, because this thing has to look like we're spending exactly what we're bringing in this year, and we're not. And that's, that's an important factor, I think. Well, I think it's an important factor.
Well, it's also in on the expenditure side, so it evens out. The one point two million.
So you could cancel.
You could cancel it out, other than the fact that you have an obligation to show it. You could cancel it, other than the fact that you have an obligation to show it. They could cancel both sides, but you have an obligation to show them.
We have an obligation to show it. Exactly right.
Just for the record, it actually doesn't cancel out on this piece of paper. The numbers on the expenditure side are actually correct, one hundred percent correct. We're going to spend eight point five one million out of the general. We're going to spend three point two six out of capital, point three four, I mean, it, it, those numbers are correct. There's nothing in there, that's the money that's going to get spent. So we will spend eighteen point three three million dollars if we spend everything on here. We will only bring in seventeen point two three million dollars of new money. But again, I don't think it matters.
But isn't the, isn't the amount that you're saying is, is double counted? Isn't it shown both in the top line of three point nine two million in revenue for parks and the expenditure down below in the four point two three million? It's, they're both built into those same.
That's exactly right.
The bottom line.
No, no, the three point nine two million, maybe I'm wrong on this. Let me look. I'll look real quick. He has a break here.
Well, and I'm.
Three point nine two four million is the operating revenues coming in in parks in 2024. Three point nine two four million. That is the tax revenue that will come into parks. Period. Or otherwise, this is wrong. But I don't think it is.
Well, the four point two three million, it's a governmental accounting standard.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no. Yeah, yeah.
And so that includes.
We'll take a second look at that before the final reading, just to make sure.
Right. I mean, it's just, just a question of, and evidently, I'm the only one that looked at this, but I mean.
Got it.
Move on.
Other questions?
I just got it. Go ahead. Randy, go ahead.
Real quick, when the sewer numbers, where are we, I think our plan was to finish remediating or rehabilitating the sewer system. How, we did a chunk of that this year. How does this, the quarter million or so in there, does that finish the project, or are we, do we still have some in the out years?
We do. The, the total project left is another million dollars.
Okay, so.
Because what we did this year and last year was the main line. Now we have the three sewer systems that feed into those. And I had a, our contractor, C and L, water, go through, camera all the lines. There's about a million dollars more. So we're slowly chipping away at that as we can.
Okay. That's all I had, otherwise. Good show.
Counselor Sheldon.
Just a couple of things. Doug, can you, can you go back to the slide that showed the ARPA uses of funds? I think it was one of the early slides. One more, right there. I thought that, when we did the study session, I thought that the thirty thousand dollars for the dais rebuild was coming out of that ARPA one point three remaining.
No, I think we always had that planned for the capital fund.
Capital? Okay. No big deal. I just, I mis, I misremembered that.
No, that's okay.
Does, a few places in your budget summary and in the narrative that you wrote up, you discussed HH, and if HH passes, this is what we're, the contingency that we're planning for. It appears that HH is not going to pass tonight. Is there any adjustments that need to be made to the budget accordingly?
Well, if we know for certain that it is going down, then yes, we can adjust the HH effect on the residential assessment rate, because that would remain where it is at six point seven six five. And then the, there's a fifty thousand dollar actual value deduction on each, each residential home. And there's a couple little tweaks on commercial. But yes, I think we calculated at a hundred eighty-three thousand dollar impact, so that would be restored back in the revenues, at least for the general fund.
And so, and so if it does change overnight and into tomorrow, when the, when the results are certified or whatever, for the second reading, we'll see that different than?
Yes.
What's in here?
If, if those are certified and, yep.
All right. My final comment is, I would, I'd like to discuss amongst council, back to the Quincy Farm discussion we had earlier, whether or not it makes any sense for us to possibly remove the bridge replacement for this year. And speaking to Jay during our last little break, it sounds like that bridge has a few more years of life that we can get out of it before we need to spend seventy-five thousand dollars to replace it. A little bit of structural shoring up, if you will, can be done now, maybe to the tune of five or ten thousand dollars, probably throwing away money. I'm guessing the five or ten thousand, if we put it in now to shore it up, but it might buy us, Jay, two, three, four years?
Yes, it could buy us a number of years.
So because we, I heard it from a number of other council members tonight, concerns about the, the big spend on this one project, Quincy Farm, and knowing that seventy-five thousand is seven percent of the million twenty-seven, million twenty-seven being net of the hundred and fifty thousand that the land preserve should be bringing to the table for the barn, seven percent, if we can save seven percent, we're going to spend five or ten thousand dollars of thrown away money to buy us a few years, I might suggest that's a good trade.
I guess my question would be, why did the land preserve want to do that now? I assume the land preserve.
Well, that was a staff initiated.
That was staff.
Staff-initiated project that they also agreed to put on the plan.
I, I think.
I guess my question is why?
Well, I mean, I, I'll take a stab at it, maybe, Jay, and you can maybe correct me if I'm wrong. I'm guessing they looked at it and said, this is something that we're going to need to do if we're out there with a big budget and a big ask of our council this year. Let's ask for the bridge to be included with it, because what I heard a few minutes ago was that it doesn't have to happen right now. So I, I don't, I'm guessing you were just trying to get it all done with one file, in one file.
Yeah, we wanted to get it done. We wanted to make the bridge accessible, and we, we didn't want to throw away money by repairing it and then coming back to council in three or four years and saying, okay, now we need to replace it.
But to be clear, it's accessible today. It's open today to walk on, and.
But is it accessible handicap accessible?
No, it's not handicap accessible.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Good point. And so let me back way up then. Is that what the main issue is here? Is that it's not, is the issue that we're asking to spend the seventy-five thousand because it's not structurally sound anymore? It has, it got certified?
It's all of the issues together. We could, we could go in and just do repairs, and then handicapped access would have to be all the way out to Quincy to get to the east side from the Highline. Or we can just start from scratch and do it all at once. So it's, we fix the bridge. we fix the bridge, we make it accessible, and we help, you know, take those pylons out of the, the flow line of the high line, so we're not cleaning debris off of those all the time. So it makes sense long term, just to replace the bridge, do it once, make it handicap accessible, and be done with the entire project.
Have we had, um, have we had complaints about accessibility from, from disability, from people with disabilities about not being able to, to gain access across that bridge?
Not to my knowledge.
We have a sign that says handicap access.
Go around.
Go around.
You have to make reasonable accommodations, I think.
Yeah. City attorneys on facilities, it's a different analysis, let's just say. Um, you don't have to do, you don't have to change every one of your structures immediately to be accessible, but when you start touching things, they need to be made accessible. I have not analyzed this particular project in that light, but reasonable accommodations is actually something that doesn't totally apply. That term doesn't totally apply in this context.
Typically, what I've always known is, is that once you start to renovate or make significant repairs, that's when you've got to, you've got to bring things up to code and/or what have you, you know, slight minor repairs. So that's one of the questions, which is, and it really goes to this, because this issue now has been raised, it's on the record, right, that we got concerns about the safety of the bridge. So it comes back to this, hey, with just minimal repairs at this point in time, is that bridge safe for what we've got planned for Quincy Farm for the next year for our residents, including horses and things going across it, et cetera, et cetera? If it is, I think Dan's point is, is well taken. But that's now the issue. Because you can see at this point in time, is if we just, you know, erased a few slats and did this and did that, and we had an issue, all of this is gonna come into.
No, I, I agree with you, a hundred percent agree. Uh, and certainly, I don't wanna put any of our residents or question folks or horses even, or anything, uh, anyone in.
Yeah, so the question is the staff.
So the question is really for our consultants, our engineers, our structural people, to take a look at that and let us know if that, if we did do some shoring up of the pylon, is that gonna be adequate, or whatever it is that Jay needs to do.
And that is in the report, that we, we could go either.
Oh, so they've already, they've already opined that a, a repair is a, is an option right now that is.
Yes, yes, yes. And staff just thought, you know, long-term thinking, let's just do it once, not waste any money, and make it accessible and safe at the same time. Now.
Well, I'll go ahead and say, I, I don't, I, I don't feel strongly about it, but I heard a few of you say it's a big spend this year, so I just threw out an option, maybe save seven percent of the Quincy Farm budget and kick the can down the road for a few years on that one particular infrastructure project.
I think that's, it's definitely an idea worth considering. I think as I'm, as it's, you know, percolating in my head right now, um, I am sort of a, so we are making a huge investment in the east side of that property, and I, I don't think that at this juncture, there's any chance that we're gonna say, no, we're not gonna use that east side. And so I feel like, you know, we're committing now to making this east side, um, this kind of space. And I do think that probably means accessibility for, that's the biggest, one of the biggest, I mean, safety, of course, is a big issue, but, um, making it accessible to all of our residents when that is going to be the activity center, um, and you, that's the best way to access, um, from the canal is that bridge. Um, so I do think that I probably would come down on the side of, we probably just need to bite the bullet, but.
If I, if I might, we, staff hasn't fully vetted out what we might apply for, for grants from county open space. Um, the barn is not a good ask. They don't like bricks and mortar. But the pond and the bridge would be something that, if we did decide to move forward with grant, we could offset those costs. We haven't budgeted for that because we haven't vetted all that out yet, but, so we may be able to reduce those costs this year.
In twenty four.
That'd be good. Randy.
Well, the, the other thing that crosses my mind when I think about things like this is, it's a big spend for this year. On the other hand, look back over the past ten, eight years.
Haven't spent much, yeah.
A lot of deferred maintenance, you know, that's starting to come to roost one way or another. So it, um, it, I mean, I don't wanna spend frivolously on the one hand. On the other hand, we got, you know, some catching up, I guess.
I, listen, I was, uh, I was prepared tonight to move forward with the budget prior to bringing up this topic about seventy five, but, um, I just, I just bring it up because I heard a few of you mentions, mentioned it. So if we, if the consensus remains that this budget is solid, and we should stick with what was presented to us by Director Farman, I'm fine with that.
Well, the other thing along those lines, though, Danny, it's a good point, which is, is, you know, you, there's also the pond. And obviously, the pond doesn't need to be dredged this year. Uh, I know it was presented earlier, and I think it was Jim's comment at the time, which I agreed with, which was, hey, that's actually a visible thing. I mean, people could pass the pond. I mean, they'd see that happening. You get a lot of PR bang for the buck on the deal. But obviously, it doesn't need to be done this year. Um, and in fact, I don't know if you've convinced Laura. At this point in time, Laura's goosey about doing it this year anyway. Um, but I, I agree, it's like going, boy, all of a sudden, you clear that pond out, you know, that's, that's what you can see when you're on the high line and people are on it all the time. It seems like a good thing to do. But to your point, though, I mean, something that could be deferred.
Yeah, and, and, you know, you look at deferment, or you look at possibly offsetting with some grant money. So if there's GOCO dollars or whatever the funds are that we can go get access to, or at least apply for, and the dredging of the pond and the bridge reconstruction would potentially be eligible for, for those kind of monies, um, maybe we move forward with the budget as presented, and hopefully, our staff does a nice job in their presentation of our grant requests, and we go get some grant money.
Yes, I know, I thought I did.
The other consideration, if we were gonna do additional analysis on, you know, safety or other needs, I think that there was a time when the canal ran water, the depth, you know, the ability for somebody to fall off that bridge and be, uh, cushioned by the water in the canal is, is certainly a time gone. So our depth of fall is now not six feet, it's probably sixteen feet.
Yeah, but you don't have to worry about drowning anymore. You don't have to worry about drowning anymore.
You don't have to worry about drowning anymore. It's a good point.
Sorry.
But I just think, if we are looking at that, talking about safety, I think that's something that we should probably add to the mix.
Okay, I have no further comments to the budget. Good job, Doug.
Any other comments? Okay. Hearing none, um, then I will close.
Well, hang on.
Oh, no, no, that's right, we have. Yep. And then we have.
New to the game, so I don't know. Um, if there was something that, when I met with Jay and Emily to talk about the budget and the numbers and things like that, um, one of the things we talked about, and I don't think it's in the budget right now, but if I wanted to see if we should add that, is that something that I bring up to us now?
Yes. If you wanna make any changes to the budget now is your chance.
So I guess the question is, and this is a bit up for discussion, but I believe Emily and Jay have had additional conversations about the, um, trail on the north side of Mansfield between Colorado and Dahlia with a number of residents. And when we talked last time, we had it kind of on the radar, but it was something that might be next year's budget, not this year's budget. And I just wanted to make sure that we were consistent with what I think the neighbors think that we're moving forward. And if that is, then we need to put it in this year's budget. So.
What project was that again? I'm sorry.
On the north side of Mansfield between Colorado Boulevard and Dahlia, a gravel fines trail that could be put.
Yes. That was bit, part of a bigger conversation, if council wanted to do some traffic calming on that street. And that project did not move forward where it was islands or, um, different street markings, street trees, those type of things. So that never made the budget because it was part of a bigger discussion.
I remember, I mean, I know I've talked with individuals about that, but I don't know that the council's ever.
Well, and, and, and that was when we met and went over budget. We talked a little bit about that with the idea that it was gonna be in the following year's budget, or could be in the following year's budget, not would be, but could be. And I guess, from what I'm understanding, talking to some of my neighbors, they think that it's coming or could be coming faster, so that we should put it in this year's budget, or else I need to correct their belief that it might be coming.
I have, I and my staff have not heard from any residents in favor. We haven't heard for years about that before. Uh, traffic calming about six or eight years ago was talked about.
Yeah.
Council decided it wasn't worth the headaches because it is gonna be a political nightmare to go in and say, okay, all of your landscaping is coming out of our trail. And so it's always just been talked about, but it's never been.
So to, to bring everybody up to speed, there have been conversations kind of on and off over the years about Mansfield. Um, if you haven't been over there, it's a very wide street. Um, and up until about four, two thousand eighteen, five years ago, um, the speed limit was thirty. And we did reduce the speed limit to twenty five to be consistent with all the residential areas, but it's, it's wide, and there's no stop signs, and it, um, people do have a tendency to speed a little bit on that street. And so there have been conversations about traffic calming, but as you all know, those get kind of controversial. And, um, there is currently an on-street trail on the south side of Mansfield, which is where all of the, um, all of the streets intersect. On the north side is, um, you know, the dirt road area. There are fewer, um, streets that intersect Mansfield on the north side. And so there was a conversation about putting in a crusher fine trail along the north side of Mansfield.
And I think that the other piece of this, just to add to that, was while there were discussions a number of years ago about traffic calming, the more recent ones that I'm referring to are that it's just not working to have bicyclists and pedestrians on that one trail on the south side. And gee, wouldn't it be easy to put the walking pedestrian side over on the north? On the north side, there is not that much landscaping. There's probably, I think we figured it out last time, and maybe it looks like we might be trying to put a map up of the area, but there are probably five or six houses, um, that comprise that half mile or quarter mile between.
Oh, there's more than that.
Yeah, and, and the last time we had community meetings, we did discuss north or south. The community wanted south because that's where more of the children are, and that's where the bus stops were, so that's.
They didn't want people crossing Mansfield to get to the trail.
To the trail, correct.
And all I'm saying is, if that's something that we think we have money for and desire, that I want to add that as a placeholder for the if in the event that we're able to move forward. And if not, then we just have to say it goes in next year's budget, or.
Or I guess the question is, has it ever, have we ever really even agreed to do it? Is the first question.
Yeah, has it been approved? And why are we putting money in for something that's not been even.
It has been requested, and I, Rob, I hear, I hear Rob's point that the, the residents are evidently under the impression that it's been approved and we're moving forward. And I don't know that that decision was ever made, so we probably do at least need to communicate that.
All right, well, I can.
Maybe what I can suggest is that, uh, I was around back in two thousand eighteen when this was looked at, and, and obviously, it didn't gain traction at that time. But if there's a community push from the neighborhood up there, that this is something they really desire, we can work with that community over the next year. We can always do a supplemental add into the budget, uh, if there is a big push to get this done, um, and, and add that in at some point in time, if that helps solve that problem.
Cause I, and I think there were two, at least the options I remember, was that the concept was we would actually narrow Mansfield and then use that extra right-of-way that we gained to put the trail in. And that's obviously a much bigger undertaking than just putting in the trail. I do think we have quite a bit of right-of-way on the north side of the street, but.
Yes, we do.
That, that's correct. All that is correct. I think everybody's statement here tonight is correct.
Yeah.
Uh, and we actually laid out a few options on that north side as how to achieve this. But again, back in two thousand eighteen, there just didn't seem to be any push to get that done.
Yeah, okay.
All right, well, thank you. I appreciate.
I think that's where it lasts. There was a lot of discussion, but never really a decision. Um, okay, uh, so now I, we'll have, um, comments from the public. There's no one signed up, but if anyone would like to speak, Susan, would you like to? Seeing none, um, I will now entertain a motion.
I'll be happy to do it, but it, you took it down. I move to approve Council Bill Eight, Series twenty twenty-three, a bill for ordinance adopting a budget and levying property taxes for the city of Cherry Hills Village, Colorado, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four on first reading.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Um, will the clerk please call the roll? Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holland?
Aye.
Counselor Will?
Aye.
Counselor Sheldon?
Aye.
Counselor Blum?
Aye.
Counselor McGuire?
Aye.
And next?
I move to approve Council Bill Nine, Series twenty twenty-three, a bill for ordinance of the city of Cherry Hills Village, Colorado, authorizing appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-four on first reading.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll? Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holland?
Aye.
Counselor Will?
Aye.
Counselor Sheldon?
Aye.
Counselor Blum?
Aye.
Counselor McGuire?
Aye.
That passes unanimously as well. Um, moving on to item nine B, Resolution forty-two, Series twenty twenty-three, requesting coverage under the FPPA statewide retirement plan administered by the Fire and Police Pension Association for city police officers. Director Farman.
Now, if I could ask both the chief and/or the director.
Oh, no, it's Chief Lyons. I read the wrong one. Sorry.
And that's fine, but when you guys go through it, um, if you could reference specifically the budget on page sixty-three of your budget, the numbers that you have showing up in there, because I couldn't quite follow the narrative versus the numbers in, in, in the actual line item budget, um, which is just because I'm an idiot, but I mean, I'm sure you'll be able to help me figure that out, so.
Certainly, I'll pull that up, but, uh, we'll start with the good evening, uh, mayor, members of council. Tonight, you have in front of you a resolution for your consideration to approve the migration of our sworn personnel to the Fire and Police Pension Association. This is sort of a revisit from a study session that we had in the spring. At that time, it was decided to, uh, table that initiative until the city could complete a more comprehensive compensation, uh, review. Uh, as you know, that has been done, um, and now we're advancing this particular initiative via resolution for your consideration. Um, should, take a second and just thank Director Farman and Catherine for, for their hard work, um, with this initiative, helping me kind of understand the big picture perspective. Um, and what I would like to do is just move through a quick presentation, sort of a, um, a summary of the study session that was done in the spring, and answer any questions, uh, that you might have. Um, as I had mentioned before, currently, the, the police department is a part of a four oh one A defined contribution plan, uh, in place of social security, which is to say that, uh, we do not participate in, in, in the social security program. We don't, uh, either on the employer's side or the employee's side. Our current plan is administered, uh, by Mission Square, formerly ICMA. Um, in nineteen eighty-seven, the police department left the FPPA. So prior to nineteen eighty-seven, it was a, a member of the Fire and Police Pension, Pension Association. On January first, they transitioned to this four oh one A system for reasons unknown, as there's nobody here to consult, uh, as to why that decision was made. But typically, um, and I think just from perspective, in the eighties, there was a, a movement, uh, to get away from those defined contra, or defined benefit pensions, simply based on affordability. Uh, our contributions remain today what they were in nineteen eighty-seven, uh, which is an eight percent employee contribution and an eight percent employer contribution. That has been unchanged for the last thirty-seven years. The reason that, um, this is such an important initiative for us, um, is that the city deserves to be an employer of choice. And there are some things that, um, can be improved, particularly on, on. And there are some things that can be improved, particularly on, on this particular benefit side, to make us more attractive to, to future candidates for the police officer position and really to retain the, the ones that we have. There's a concerted push on recruitment, but retention is equally as important that we, you know, we, we hold on to that, that, that human capital, the greatest investment that we have, which is our people. This particular line of work requires completing physically and mentally demanding jobs. And really, I think that the city deserves the highest performing officer that we can get. Unfortunately, it's one of those jobs that with time becomes more challenging kind of to the human body to ask police officers, regardless of jurisdiction, to do the, the demanding parts of this job. Go chase bad guys, get in and out of the car. Require the athletic prowess and certainly just more challenging as, as we all sort of advance in age. And again, really just putting a focus on, on being an employer of choice. I think over the course of this last year, one thing that I have found is there is an expectation by our community that we attract and retain the highest quality of officers. Just a quick comparison, benchmark 21 cities in the metro area. The first line, this is sort of an interesting graph, but I'll, I'll kind of walk through it. The first line consists of 14 agencies that are already in this particular pension plan, the FPPA. The other categories kind of working our way down are organizations that are part of a 401 and either also have social security or have a greater contribution rate on the employer and the employee side. Those totals on the left is that contribution rate, not including social security and FICA and those kinds of things, just purely the contribution rate into that plan document. And you'll see that Cherry Hills Village is at the bottom of the 21 agencies that were benchmarked. And I, so I think that graph speaks of its, of itself. If City Council approves tonight the resolution, this becomes the primary city retirement for all future police officers. And I just want to kind of hone in on that. So the only employee compelled to go into this program are employees that we don't have yet. Future employees, police officers hired after the effective date. Our current staff will have a choice to either migrate into that FPPA defined benefit program or to remain in their 401. And that election won't occur until there is a tremendous number of meetings, both through Mission Square and FPPA and their own financial advisors, should they wish to, to evaluate that before they make a decision. Once they make that decision, however, there's a one-time election and then they, they're in, they're either, they either migrate or they stay. But that is not until the end of this implementation, implementation period. And we're, we're talking spring of 2024 before we can get to that point. Only sworn officers are eligible, so my support staff, they, they're not eligible for the defined benefit program. They'll remain in that 401A play, 401A plan moving forward. Counsel asked this question during the study session and I thought it was a really relevant question. So I just recently polled my incumbent staff. Of the 24 officers who were eligible to take the survey, 22 were able to complete that. Of the 22 who completed it, 19 suggested at first glance, based on what they know, that they would likely transition into that defined benefit plan. Three identifying that they would remain in the 401A. Now naturally, this is at first glance, this is not their election. This is before they get all of the information to make an informed decision, just to really kind of highlight what their interests are as of today's date. Again, I kind of touched on this, police officers contribute 8% into their retirement plan and the city also contributes 8%. And that is a number that has remained unchanged since 1987. If we were to make that migration, the, the police officers actually take the, the heaviest hit in this first few years. So their contribution will go from 8% to 12% as required by that plan document. The city's contribution in 2024 would be 10%. And that increases by a half a percent every year up through 2030, capping at 13%. So essentially, just kind of raw numbers, the plan currently is funded at 16%. Now it would be, it would be funded at 25% between the city and the, the employee. And I think this maybe touches on your question and there, there was some bouncing around on numbers. But if, if we were to move all 25 of our sworn members into this plan, the cost, the initial cost in 2024 would increase by $95,000 compared to what we're paying now. So essentially, as you know, the city contributes 8%. They would now have to contribute 10% and assume a 1.9% affiliation fee or continuing contribution. And again, that moves up a half a percent every year through 2030, capping at that 13%. Implementation at best guess, and there's a lot that factors into this, so ebb and flow a few weeks, but we're shooting for the first pay period in June of 2024 for implementation. So this is where it also might become a little confusing for, for us all. But for Counselor Holland, just to kind of frame this a little bit, that $95,000 would be an annual cost, but we're almost halfway through the year before we'd implement that. So that's going to significantly reduce the, the city's contribution or that increase in the city's contribution for next year. But certainly moving years beyond that, it'll, it'll pick right back up, right?
And in the meantime, we would continue the 8% that.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
And since you're on it, maybe I can ask, so in other words, in the budget, it's, I wrote through it, I don't know, it's 200 and maybe 51,000, 370, anyway, it's 2 something, 1, 370. I wrote through it, so I can't tell.
Oh, it's 211.
211.
211, 370.
211, 370. Current ICMA plan retirement contributions, that's what we're paying now and that money would go to F. I mean, in other words, because that's still in there, that's in the budget and the budget's assuming that we make this conversion. And the 95 is below that, which is the additional, and you say, as you just said, it'll probably be less than that because we'll.
Yeah, nearly half of that, right.
But the, but the presumption then is, is that the 211 is going to go to the FFPA, I guess, right?
Right, the 95 is the increment. If everybody switched over to, and migrated to FPPA. So that's the difference, the extra contribution rate the city would assume between the current and the FPPA mandatory rate.
Okay, good, that's, because it's the only reason, because the, the last budget thing you sent out, you had it at 92 and then 95. I mean, I'm like, boy, how did that, how did that all change? But it changed by about 100,000 bucks, so that's why I was asking the question.
Okay, yeah.
From the, from the last, the book, you know, the last thing you sent out in the study session.
Well, I think it's, it was 95 before.
No, 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 the 211 was 92.
Oh, okay, that, that was due to the little bit of increment on the merit increase when we assumed the consultant's recommendation.
Okay.
It was a little bit higher than what the original September version of the proposed budget was.
Okay, all right, good, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Chief, couple of quick questions. Are they 100% vested with their contribution and the city's at initially?
The, the vesting period for both is five years.
Five years, so it vests over the next five years then?
I'm sorry?
It would vest over a five-year period to help retain the policemen. The other question is on the 401A, are they 100% vested in that now? Is that, that's why maybe two or three people want to stay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think everyone looks at their own individual circumstances, what they were able to kind of put away in that 401, how successful they were in the market, those kinds of things. I think a large piece of that puzzle is how long they intend to work. So if they're not intending to work beyond five years, it doesn't make sense to get into a program that requires a five-year vesting period. And then the percentage is, the way the retirement system works is that the, the, the member for the first 10 years in that program earns 2% a year. So if you were to, to do five years, your retirement is 10% of your pay. And so it, that's not amazingly lucrative. This plan really is designed for people who intend to work, make Cherry Hills Village their home, come to this organization, stay in this organization and retire after a lengthy period of service.
So, so 2% per year is how the defined benefits.
For the first 10 years and then after that, 2.5% a year.
2.5, until whenever they retire.
Yeah, so someone that might do 30 years is somewhere in that 70%, 75% of their highest three-year average pay. And then that benefit is for life.
Great, thank you.
And there's a matrix on that and I, it's, there's a, essentially a schedule, right? So based on your age, years of service and, and those kinds of things, it provides a percentage of your highest, average of your highest three years. So it allows for some planning for people. In addition to that, there are some, some, some benefits to this program, some opportunities that other programs don't provide, like what we call DROP, which is the Deferred Retirement Option Plan. It allows a member to continue to work for up to five years after essentially retiring. We stay, they stay on the books, they get a paycheck, they have all the city benefits. But their, their, their benefit remains static. And, and then they walk away and then the, the FPPA essentially puts that money into an account and invests it for them as sort of a lump sum. And there's also an opportunity just to defer your retirement, not collect it anymore. And it grows a little bit for every year, you don't defer that. So this system allows for some opportunities based on individual needs. And I think that's part of the, the overall analysis for each of our members.
Are you done making your presentation?
I'm like one slide, two.
Sure.
I'm super close.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
Thanks.
So again, I, I just touched on the pros. The cons is that there isn't an increased cost to the city. And that, we expect that to go up around $5,000 every year between 2024 and 2030. The next steps would be to, if this resolution would provide, if it was approved, it would provide notice to FPPA of our intent to move forward. They then schedule a bunch of meetings. On their product, we would ask Human Resources to coordinate meetings with our current 401A provider. There's group meetings, there are individual meetings. There's a lot of analysis into, into the programs before a decision is made. I kind of mentioned, and I'll, I'll brief through this, but I, I mentioned the implementation period of June of 2024, if all goes well and sort of on schedule. And then I have a proposed motion here for when that opportunity presents itself. So I'm happy to answer any questions at this point.
Counselor Will.
Thank you, Mayor. Question, a question on portability. I, I don't know exactly how portable this is. And while I realize that FPPA may put us at parity, I don't know whether that would be enough, you know, to cause folks to stay if it's fully portable versus all of the other conditions of employment.
Yeah, I can touch on that a little. Unlike the portability of a 401, when you move from a qualifying plan to another qualifying plan, that kind of money is able to move around a little bit and, and can be moved from employer to employer. FPPA is the same if you move from an FPPA organization to another FPPA organization, your, your service credits all transfer. The, as far as actual portability, the employees' contributions are all portable. The employers, after a certain period of time, can be moved into an investment, which is funded through fidelity to make, to make it portable, but with some, some penalty associated to that. I think the, the, for lack of a better term, the lack of portability is sort of the retention tool as well, right? So you hire somebody, we're asking them to, to remain at least in, as an FPPA employee for five years to vest. The other thing which we're really kind of seeing now is our attraction to, for other law, for more experienced law enforcement officers who want to leave their current employer to come to us. They're asking about FPPA as their option because they're, they've got 20, 25 years into another agency and they don't want to lose that, that opportunity to continue to, to contribute into, into that FPPA plan. So the, that's about the best answer I can get. I don't know all the nuance to, to the investment migration and moving it from a defined benefit to an investment so that it can become portable. I just know that there is a disconnect between if you leave before your vesting period, only thing that becomes portable is your contribution and not your employer's contribution.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. I'm, I'm assuming that an officer who elects to go into this program still retains their pre-existing 401A.
That, that's a great question, yes. So that, that investment is theirs and they have a few options with that. One is that they, they stay in the 401A or keep their 401A and let it do whatever it's going to do in the market without any further employer contribution. Second is that with our incumbent staff, because we are considered a reentry department, we were in it once before, we have a little bit more flexibility with the rules and the programs that are available to us. One such program that they could opt into is a hybrid. And that hybrid allows for a certain contribution to be defined benefit and the, the balance to be put into their 401A. So if they, they have X amount of dollars in their 401A and they want to kind of play both markets or have additional revenue streams upon retirement, they have the ability to do that. What most do is that they, because it's a qualifying plan, is that they take the balance of their 401 and purchase time into the FPPA, what they call service credits. And, and that's based on a lot of different factors, their, their current wage, their anticipated wage upon retirement age, their current, you know, these kinds of things, how long they intend to work. And, and then, so you, you could have an officer that's got 10 years here at Cherry Hills Village and they can afford to buy eight years in FPPA. Now they're already eight years into that new plan. So that's what most do, but that is, that's all done.
Does it count towards their vesting?
It does, yeah, it does. You have to be in, you have to have a year in FPPA before you can purchase those service credits. Although if I'm not mistaken, I think they said, because we're a reentry, that that doesn't apply to us. So they could, they could purchase service credits upon affiliation.
All right, so any officers who elect to stay in the 401A and not do pension, if I'm reading your, and, and this is a concern I had before, but if I'm reading your proposal now, they will also get the step up in matched contributions to the, so the city will be matching the same percentage for all, all of the officers?
Yes, so that was a, a conversation, a detailed conversation. There are, many organizations have done it many different ways. What we felt is though the most equitable thing to do for our employees as a way to demonstrate how valuable they are is if we're going to increase the city's contribution, so a city benefit for those that are in FPPA, we should do the same for those who wish to stay in the 401. What I did not compel is that their, the employee contribution raise commensurate as well. Because I don't want to put somebody into a position with no choice and ask them to, you know, they're going to get a 4% raise in January, then I'm going to take it away and make them put it into a, into their retirement. So what they can do. They can, so what they'll have the ability to do, should they choose, is to take that extra couple of percentage and invest that into their 457, which is totally voluntary.
And how much of the $95,000 estimated on an annual basis, how much of that is affiliation fee?
It's, the affiliation fee is 1.9%. That will never go up and it is reevaluated every two years and could go down. And that is. What, it's 1.9% of.
Of what?
So of each of the, that's a great question. So of each of the, that's a great question.
Of salary or of the contribution?
Do you remember?
I think it's close to half because the increase in contribution rate would be 3.9%, right? The 2% going from eight to 10 and then another 1.9, so it's 3.9.
Yeah, it's it is one, so I I dealt with this in my former. Of their salary, correct, yes. Now that is it worth mentioning, as budgeted, the city absorbs that 1.9% affiliation fee. Now I should mention that does not that that fee is not attached to any new employees. It's only for the incumbent staff. The law does allow for that to be split equally between the employee and the employer. But as budgeted, we've asked that the city consider picking up that 1.9% affiliation fee.
I'm just gonna, I support this. I think I think if this is something that the officers want, it's really important to consider it. However, I I did want to ask Catherine a question. When we did the compensation study, I don't recall anything, well, I there was some catch-up money on salaries for the police officers, right, hard or catch-up merit increases? Merit increases?
Yes. I think Catherine can answer that, but I think they had some steps that might have adjusted, plus the merit.
I didn't recall anything that said benefit-wise, we weren't that benefit-wise, we were lagging other.
No, Lori listed us as competitive in most of our benefits, including medical retirement. She wasn't knowledgeable enough. She's located in Oklahoma. Her compensation study, it doesn't include FPPA because it's such a niche program that's specific to Colorado. So there wasn't a thorough analysis of FPPA.
So it wasn't thorough in that you don't think you you think that what we are lagging or?
You want my personal opinion on?
Yeah.
Okay. No, that's I just want to make sure I.
Yeah.
Answer the question you're asking. I think from what Chief Lyons has experienced in his employment in Colorado and what other municipalities are doing for their fire and police, especially with all of the national events that have happened, plus our state legislation is is yes, this is a plan that seems to be making a comeback. When I first started here, I would say our chief of police, she came from Lakewood. There wasn't a huge interest in FPPA. I would ask the question just because the question should be asked every so often. I think there were some issues with FPPA, as Chief Lyons mentioned, in the 90s. The trend was to move to these defined contribution plans. They were all the rage. And I think as you're seeing with a lot of trends, like if you're familiar with health savings plans in medical, those were supposed to be the fix for medical insurance. And now there's not a huge motivation to be in those types of plans because of all the unknown costs. So with FPPA, I think they struggled a little bit during those years, but have now proven with these different plans that they offer more flexibility and more competitiveness for retirement.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other?
I got just a couple more. Just so that I understand, by the way, I think this this sounds like a great and by the way, great presentation too. I'm sure Catherine helped with that as well. So great, great to both you guys. But let me just understand on Exhibit A. If the people that can the people that convert and go over, maybe maybe that's what it is, is the first chart, that's for the people that are hired after this and they go right into it. And is the second the second chart hybrid component for the people that are flipping over but are?
So the first chart, the first table is the statewide defined benefit plan. So in the resolution where it checks that the city is eligible for the statewide benefit plan and the hybrid plan, that's for our current employees. So they have a choice between those two plans. They could go with the statewide defined benefit plan, which is what we've mostly been discussing tonight. And then the hybrid component is this other plan that's offered to them because of our reentry status.
So Exhibit A allows for two options only for incumbent staff. Anyone hired after the effective date would go into what then becomes our approved or authorized retirement plan, which is the statewide defined benefit. That's only eligible because we happen to be what they call a reentry. Other otherwise, that wouldn't be an option available for our staff.
And I'll bet I'll bet the thing that would help me. I don't know if this is true. My bet is is that there's probably a chart that shows, you know, with this many years of service on this plan, you get this much dough. There's different charts for that, there's different schedules for that first chart and that second chart, huh?
Yeah, because the contribution rates are different.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. That's that's so that would make sense then because I'm looking at this and I'm going. Okay, obviously, the difference is is that, you know, when you get to your 30, whenever you get to your year schedule and whatever it is you're going to go down, you're going to get more with that first chart than you are table than you are with the second one. That's correct, right, okay, that makes sense. The only other thing which I'd mentioned briefly in but on the the resolution, since since we're going to pass this tonight, I'd mentioned before, it talks about the second whereas, the City of Cherry Hills Village City Council, defined as employer. Actually, I think if you if you just put that employer up at the top, whereas where you go, the City of Cherry Hills Village, employer.
Correct.
And then that would correct that thing and it would be good.
Yeah, we've we've we can make those changes. It's changed to define the employer as the city, not the city council.
Right, and 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 it's easy, I mean, it's actually easier than I thought. You just take it's the employer that's in the wrong spot. That should go up in the first whereas and then it takes care of it. Because it is the City of Cherry Hills Village, county city council that's passing the resolution.
Made the determination and made passing the resolution, correct.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Okay.
Any other comments? Do we need to include that amendment in our motion or just?
I think you could reference it, move to approve it with the amendment as discussed.
Recommend amendment, okay.
Anyone?
I move to approve Resolution 42 Series 2023 requesting coverage under the FPPA statewide retirement plan administered by the Fire and Police Pension Association for the city police officers with the change that we've discussed about the employer, that clarification.
It's been seconded by Councilmember McGuire. All in favor, oh, wait, yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you very much. Moving on to Item C, Council Bill 10 Series 2023, amending Chapter 4, Article 4 concerning purpose and interpretation of the Retail Sales Tax Code on First Reading, Director Farman.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, good evening. This is Council Bill 10 on first reading and it is regarding the Sales Tax Code and creating an intent or purpose for that code section. Here's the progress the city has accomplished this year related to the approval of last year's ballot question 2A and updating the Sales Tax Code. We are now in the fifth bullet there, adding a sales tax intent. When we reviewed the code, Mayor Protem Wheel had noticed that we really did not have a purpose or intent incorporated with this code section like other cities had. So we had kind of tabled that at the time and now we're circling back to it. After discussing this topic briefly at the April 18 study section, study session, along with reviewing other city codes, especially the ones that we looked at when we were updating the Sales Tax Code, staff is proposing to add this code section to the municipal code section 4440. Right now, code section 4440 is reserved and does not have any intent or content. So in summary, this proposed section in the Sales Tax Code shall provide uniformity and govern the imposition, administration, enforcement and collection of sales taxes. And the purpose of this article is to exercise the city's authority to raise revenue that is essential to being home rule. Any questions about this recommendation?
Just a just a question slash recommendation. I reckon my guess is you stuck it into 440 because 440 is blank and it's reserved. But really, this thing needs to be the start of the of the article. I mean, it really should. It shouldn't come way into the middle explaining what the article is all about and now you're talking about it. My recommendation is is you make it 44-4-05 or something.
That did cross my mind. I I do try and stay as consistent with numbering as possible because I do find over time, from a code hygiene perspective, numbering can get way out of whack, but we can take that direction if you so choose. Okay. We can do that for for second reading.
Second reading.
Yep, okay. Any other comments? Okay, hearing then, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill 10 Series 2023, a bill for an ordinance of the City of Cherry Hills Village, amending our Chapter 4, Article 4, concerning purpose and interpretation of the Retail Sales Code on First Reading.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll? Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holland?
Aye.
Counselor Wheel?
Aye.
Counselor Sheldon?
Aye.
Counselor Blum?
Aye.
Counselor McGuire?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Moving on, Council Bill 11 Series 2023, amending Section 2-4-80 of the Municipal Code, authorizing restitution in municipal court on first reading, Director Farman. You're like, you're the man of the night today.
Good evening, yes, now we're going to cover the Municipal Court Code. And of course, this bill would authorize court officially to provide restitution. Right now, the Colorado revised statute does provide authority setting restitution in courts. And this bill would officially empower the city's judges to order a defendant to make restitution for damage or injury, holding them accountable for financial losses caused to the victim. It also enables the city to have more control on the impacts of these cases. So the judges kind of unofficially are doing restitution agreements right now, but they have been concerned and this would kind of close that loophole in the city code and and give them the official authorization.
And if I could just add, the judges have the authority. I think their concern is they wanted it explicitly, you know, expressly stated in the code. So this is at their request and they have reviewed this. Thank you. Any questions?
I have one question. I went and looked at at the Criminal Code and I think it should probably refer instead of to just six point or 603, I think it should just refer to Part 6, which is the whole section on restitution.
I just accidentally went past.
For example, 602 are the definitions?
Yes, and I'm pulling up my language because.
And then 603 is the assessment of restitution, just.
Agreed. The language I have in there is consistent with Title 18, Article 1.3, including but not limited to six. And then I just specified 1603, but I went with the umbrella of Article 1.3. But.
I don't know why you wouldn't just, why you just refer to 603 and not?
Part 6 for restitution. We could do that.
Part 6. I think you're.
We can make that change for a second reading. Thank you for that suggestion, yeah, Counselor Holland?
And this is a minor thing, but you know, we always say, hey, we never read these ordinances. And when we do, let's read them to see if there's any other errors that could be fixed. When I looked at this, I thought all throughout, you know, everything else, it talks about the municipal judge. And in eight, which is just before nine, which is the one we're adding, we talk about the municipal court. And my sense is is that probably should read the municipal judge may in order to guarantee payment. Quite frankly, if it was my view, actually, wherever it says municipal judge throughout the whole thing, it would say the court. Because I think basically the legislature is empowering the court to basically do these things. But given the fact that it says municipal judge all the way through, I think.
Well, except for in the very beginning where it says the municipal court.
Well, right, and because that's that's basically talking about the power. But the rest of it, all the way through is we're empowered, the judge is empowered to do this, do that, do this, do that.
So so I'll make a note, you're you're going to hear a lot more about municipal court. And the judges specifically requested this get be this be done very quickly by the end of the year. And so we are mindful of, and you will probably see larger changes in the code. We're going to be working together with the judges on some other items they'd like to see. And we need to update some things in your code as well.
Okay, so you probably because it'd be an easy amendment here, but you just want.
I'm I'm not arguing against the amendment. So you're saying to change this to in Section 9 to municipal court as opposed to judge? Or no, the other way around.
Section 8, Section 8 to change municipal court to municipal judge.
Because it's the only one that says.
It's the only one, every every other one says municipal judge.
Oh, you're talking about in to add to this ordinance too, okay. In sec in number eight to change the word court to judge. We can do that, okay.
I mean, it's just, like I say, I know I'm a pain in the butt about this stuff. The issue, though, is is anytime we're sitting down and taking the time to read an ordinance, my view is let's do the whole thing. I mean, you know, if you see something, let's fix it.
I I guess the question crossing my mind overall is, should we change it all to court if we think court is the better term?
And that's my, but I mean, I'd I'd rely on the city attorney to make that recommendation. That's my that's my sense, but I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't.
Let's go with consistency and you can figure out whether it's judge or court. How does that sound?
Well, so I'm I'm just, yeah, it does say municipal judge throughout the rest of it. I hadn't analyzed that all the way through. But we can add in a change to eight in the in second reading to make it read the municipal judge may. Okay, so we have those two changes references to the section and changing Section 8 court to judge. Are there any other comments?
By the way, since I went, I loved hearing when Susan said, hey, I went and looked at the Criminal Code and I'm not the only one.
All right, if there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
You want to pop this one on the screen again?
I move to approve Council Bill 11 Series 2023, a bill for an ordinance of the City of Cherry Hills Village, amending Section 2-4-80 of the Cherry Hill Cherry Hills Municipal Code, authorizing restitution in municipal court on first reading with the two changes discussed with legal counsel.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Will the clerk please call the roll? Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holland?
Aye.
Counselor Wheel?
Aye.
Counselor Sheldon?
Aye.
Counselor Blum?
Aye.
Counselor McGuire?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that passes unanimously. Item E, construction contract with KRM Concrete LLC for the removal of the traffic island on Bellevue Avenue at Cherry Hills Farm Drive. Finally.
We should probably have Doug do this one.
It's Director Goldie, but I'm just going to go with Doug.
I will let Randy do this one. Randy, go ahead.
Director Goldie.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you this evening is a request to approve the construction contract with KRM Concrete for the removal and reconstruction of the removal of the island or reconstruction of the street to add a turn lane or technically called suicide lane for the residents wanting to go east out of Cherry Hills Farms.
Is that really the technical name for it?
No. But that is what all the the transportation experts do use. If you ask CDOT, they will say suicide lane, but it's not in the book.
It's not in the M E T C or whatever.
Um, as you recall, a few of you were around in 2021 when we first did this. And because of the costs that came up during the pandemic and after the pandemic, the first we we had budgeted $50,000 and the HOA had also budgeted $50,000 because our our engineering estimate was around $100,000. The bids came back at 183. So the HOA again brought this up this year. During the budget process for 2023, council approved a budget line on. During the budget process for 2023, council approved a budget line minimum of $95,000 and 50% of the project with the HOA paying the other 50%. We rebid those, and to our surprise, we got a bid that was almost close to our 2021 estimate. Because the bid was so low, we made sure, say, we, Ryan Bernenzoni did an extra amount of research on this contractor, as we have not used them before. Their references came back great. They've worked for numerous other cities, similar projects in state highways. We had multiple meetings with them to make sure that this bid was fully inclusive. But because of the unknowns, working in the CDOT right-of-way, we're asking council to add a 25% contingency, just to make sure that we don't have to come back mid-project and approve anything if we come into hazardous materials or faulty subgrade or something like that. So if there are any questions, I can answer those now. I'll leave this up before I go to the resolution, in case there's questions on the map.
Any questions? Nope.
I'm going to pull and parole, or maybe it's a Susan now, I don't know.
Did you look at the Criminal Code?
I wanted to point out, there's just an inconsistency in the staff write-up. I've got to get to page 287. Oh, under discussion, on third line down, you referenced Cherry Hills Park Drive. I think that's supposed to be Cherry Hills Farm Drive, but it makes a difference. Just wanted to point it out. Okay.
Are you doing work over there, too? All right, are there any other...
Also in the discussion, the last line there says pay up to 50%. They agreed to pay 50%, not up to 50%.
They agreed to pay 50%, but it was capped at 95. So in the...
Play my role of Earl. 50% of the total cost.
Yes, up to 95. Okay. Any other comments?
Okay.
I will entertain a motion.
All right. I move to approve construction contract with KRM Concrete LLC in the amount of $108,190 and an owner contingency in the amount of $27,000 for a total maximum expenditure of $135,190, contingent upon the approval of the agreement with the Cherry Hills Farm HOA for 50% of the funding. I further move and authorize the city attorney to make such changes as may be needed, to correct any non-material errors or language, or to negotiate such changes to the contract as may be appropriate, and do not substantially increase the obligations of the city, and to authorize the mayor to sign such agreement when in final form.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Item F, agreement with Cherry Hills Farm Homeowners Association, HOA, for the, for funding of the Bellevue Island removal project. Director Goldie or Director Farman?
So as you noticed, the resolution for the last item was contingent upon the resolution being, this being signed by the HOA. So we have an agreement here that the city attorney has put together for us. I believe Counselor Wheel has news that I don't think the HOA is going to have any changes to the agreement, and will sign it as it was presented. So if there's any questions about this agreement with the HOA, I can answer those now.
Any questions? I believe the HOA is represented here tonight. There are any questions?
One other board members.
None? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion.
The same, in the discussions, the same reference to the long street. I thought you might bring that up, but since you didn't, I felt compelled to.
You left it to Susan.
I figured, since it was not really relevant, it's not in the motion at all, it's just in the discussion, I just wanted to point it out. But yes, it...
I'll entertain a motion.
Excellent. I move to approve the island removal contribution agreement between the City of Cherry Hills Village and Cherry Hills Farm, Cherry Hills Farm Owners Association, Homeowners Association, hello. I further move to authorize the city attorney to make such changes as may be needed, to create, to correct any non-material errors or language, or to negotiate such changes to the agreement as may be appropriate, and do not substantially increase the obligations of the city, and to authorize the mayor to sign such agreement when in final form.
Second. Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Before we move into the, how's everybody doing? Do we need a personal privilege break? Do we want to keep going? We're good? All right. I will now recess the city council meeting at 9:36 PM and convene the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village, Charlestown Park, Third Filing General Improvement District Board. Will the clerk please call the roll? Board Member Eber?
Here.
Board Member Holland?
Here.
Board Member Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Chair Brown?
Here.
Board Member Sheldon?
Here.
Board Member Blum?
Here.
Board Member McGuire?
Here.
I will open the public hearing for the 2024 proposed budget at 9:37 PM. Director Farman? Or no, yes, Director Farman.
Good evening, Board Chair Brown and board members. There is no action on this item this evening, although we're holding a public hearing for the proposed 2024 budget, and staff will present a resolution for the board's consideration at the December 6 meeting. As of right now, the mill levy is estimated at seven mills, down from 10.75 mills this last year, and that will be subject to any final Arapahoe County assessed value. It is estimated that HH would have reduced the assessed value by 2.3%, so we'll have to wait and see what those results are. So this may change slightly when you see the resolution. But right now, the total revenue for 2024 is estimated at $27,489, and the expenditure is at $26,610, leaving an estimated fund balance of $34,524, which is reserved for debt service and also the Tabor required reserve.
Thank you for that. Just as a heads up for everyone, the current standing for Prop HH is $760,000 against $492,004. So it's not going to pass. Is there any public...
Yeah, I have a question.
Anyone signed up to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 9:38 PM. Oh, did you have, sorry?
I have a question, I don't know.
Oh, let me reopen the public hearing then, sorry.
Because I wasn't on council when we had these GIDs, and so I'm on now, and I want to ask the question. I did notice the mill levy, it's going from 10.75 to 7.0. If it needs to go up, does it have to go to the voters? You can lower, we can lower, anybody can lower the mill levy. But if it, and I presume that the reason it is, is because you wanted to keep it to what was necessary in order to pay the debt service on that deal. But if something happened and it needed to go up, what would have to be done here? Or do special districts operate under different rules? I don't think they do, right?
This was specifically, the levy was for debt service, so it can, I was told by the county, it can float. So if for some reason, the debt service did increase for some reason, then yes, the mill levy can float up to meet those debt service and bond requirements.
That's amazing to me. I don't, that, I find that, that's what we were talking about when I was going to the reserve level. I mean, there are ambiguities in all of this Tabor stuff.
But that's based on the required need? Because we have debt, the specific debt service?
No, 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 I get it. Everybody's always explaining to me what, I understand that, I understand.
There's just so many...
What I want to know is going, where is the authority to use the Al Gore thing? What is the controlling legal authority that allows that to happen? And no one can ever say it. It just happens. It's just one of the reasons that libertarians like me say, hey.
Dogs and cats living together is crazy. Resolution 3, Series 20, oh, so I do close the public hearing now at 9:40 PM. Resolution 3, Series 2023, appointing a vice chair of the GID board, Clerk Gillespie.
Good evening, Chair Brown and members of the board. We are presenting this as more of a housekeeping item. The mayor serves as the chair of the board, and city staff serve as the staff of the board. But the board needs to appoint its own vice chair, and so we're proposing that that be the mayor pro tem. And happy to answer any questions.
Not that I have any issues with that, but it says here that the mayor pro tem must be appointed. Is that true, or is that just...
Oh, just that...
Okay.
Not that you have to appoint a vice chair, but if you want the mayor pro tem to serve as the vice chair, it has to be appointed.
Got it. I understand. Okay, I understand. Because I was going to say, no, you don't want Randy. Nominate somebody else. Nominate Donald Trump. Do you have to be on the board? Okay, sorry, it's getting late, I'm slap happy.
I move to approve Resolution 3, Series 2023, a resolution Cherry Hills Village, Charlestown Park, Third Filing General Improvement District, directors appointing a vice chair of the GID board.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. To be clear, that would be mayor pro tem, Randy Wheel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. I now adjourn the meeting of the Charlestown, of the Cherry Hills Village, Charlestown Park, Third Filing General Improvement District Board at 9:42 PM, and convene the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village, Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District Board Meeting, also at 9:42 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll? Board Member Eber?
Here.
Board Member Holland?
Here.
Board Member Wheel?
Here.
Chair Brown?
Here.
Board Member Sheldon?
Happy to be here.
Board Member Blum?
Here.
Board Member McGuire?
Here.
Moving down to new business, I will open the public hearing for the 2024 proposed budget at 9:43 PM. Director Farman?
Good evening again, Board Chair Brown and board members. Again, there is no action on this item this evening, and it is just a public hearing. Staff will present a resolution for board's consideration at the December 6 meeting regarding the 2024 budget. This GID has a mill levy that's estimated at 12.8 mills, which is down from 18.1 from last year. And revenues are proposed to be $19,816, and expenditures at $19,560. So that would leave the ending fund balance at $10,671, which is reserved, again, for debt service and also for the Tabor restriction. I can answer any questions. Again, you'll see that resolution on December 6.
Seeing no questions, we'll see, is there any public comment? No one has signed up. I will hereby close the public hearing at 9:44 PM. Resolution 3, Series 2023, appointing a vice chair of the GID board, Clerk Gillespie.
Good evening, Chair Brown and members of the board. Staff is presenting this resolution to appoint a vice chair, which would be the mayor pro tem as a housekeeping item, and happy to answer any questions.
Anyone want to give Randy a run for his money? Nope. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution 3, Series 2023, a resolution of the Cherry Hills Village, Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District, Board of Directors, appointing a vice chair of the GID board.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. I now adjourn the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village, Southmore, I lost the name of it. Southmore Hudson Parkway Filing General Improvement District Board of Directors at 9:45 PM, and reconvene the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council. Moving on to mayor's reports, and I'll be very brief. I forwarded you an email update from our lobbyists about housing legislation that's proposed. The short version, the good news is that duplexes, triplexes, sixplexes, et cetera, seem to be off the table this time around, which was perhaps the biggest concern for our community. However, ADUs as a use by right in all single-family lots is back on the table, as is mandatory upzoning near light rail stations, in some as of yet to be determined. Seems like they're going back to the circular radius idea, which I think is not a very effective idea. But anyway, those two things are back on the table and could have significant impacts for Cherry Hills Village, so we'll continue to work with that. CML is also proposing their own set of legislation, so at least there would be some alternatives. And in an interesting change this year, the Senate Democrats just released the list of committee appointments, and Dylan Roberts is no longer on the Housing Committee, which, as you all know, he was sort of a key, no vote last year around, last year. So he will no longer be on that committee. I also just wanted to give a shout out to, it was referenced earlier, to Dino Maniades' book that was released about the history of Cherry Hills Village. It really is a great book. It has a lot, it's part of a series, and so it's very photo-intensive. It's sort of a photo history, and it really is, has some amazing, fascinating photos. I would highly recommend that you pick up your copy at your favorite bookstore. I also attended an event for the Police Foundation, which was very nice, and kudos to Chief Lyons for always doing such a wonderful job representing our police department to our citizens, and I know that they really appreciate his leadership. And I will leave it at that. I'll start down here. Council Member McGuire?
No report.
No report.
No report.
Well, I have to celebrate. I have to celebrate Jay's success. We have, Jay went ahead and put together a list of electric equipment that he was interested in purchasing, and among those, we have a mower, it's a fairly large mower, commercial mower, some chargers, batteries, push mowers, a variety of different things, and applied to Regional Air Quality Council for a grant. So for $65,000 worth of equipment, he was able to get $50,000 of support. In other words, we're out $15,000. This is equipment that we were going to replace anyway. So it was, you know, it kind of toward the end of its useful life. This gets us into, well, more deeply into electric equipment, which is a good thing. And Regional Air Quality Council, that's the same body. It's headed up by a guy named Mike Silverstein, and that's the same body that is recommending to the legislature, well, not legislature, to the Air Quality Commission of the state, recommendations for legislation where cities will be compelled to go to electric equipment out a couple of years from now, and dealers will be prevented from selling some of the gas, small gas-powered equipment, like the two-cycle, you know, weed trimmers, blowers, things like that. So I think terrific win for the city. Great job, Jay. That is, oh, and thank you, council, for your support on Bellevue Media, and I think that's going to be an improvement, safety-wise for the residents, and that's terrific. And that's all I have.
No report, just thanks again to Doug and city manager for all the hard work on the budget, and as well as the rest of the staff for putting together the budget, and also for, on the reserve policy, that was terrific. And then another shout out again to Chief Lyons and Catherine for that FFPA. That was a great presentation in terms of, even though I didn't understand one of the tables, but great job otherwise.
Just one item. Disappointed to...
Just one item. Disappointed to report that we had two instances in the same day in my neighborhood with cars driving excessively quick on the dirt roads, both non-residents. I've talked to the police department already about both of them. One was two cars that came southbound on Parkway, turned right onto Middle Road. One right behind the other, swerving, fishtailing, drifting. I immediately stopped them. They did not engage other than quickly to turn around and go back where they came from. The second, that afternoon, a second instance, also reported to the police. Young guy, teens, twenties, four additional passengers in his car. I happened to be with former Mayor Chrisman at the time, northbound on Cherry Lane, same area. Swerving, fishtailing, drifting, five young men, all just, and he stopped. And he talked to me and I read him the riot act and he was not a resident. And at first, all he did was deny it. And secondly, he said, I'm sorry, it'll never happen again, which I have no reason to believe is accurate. But nonetheless, I know we just redid the traffic calming policy. My area, and I've asked the police to spend more time on it, and they have said they will continue to do that, but I want people to know that it still unfortunately goes on.
All right, thank you. City manager and staff?
Thank you. I just have two quick comments. One, I'd just like to echo Councilmember Holland's. Congratulations to the staff. We have such a great staff and putting together very complicated issues. They make it look easy and even though you may have a few questions, those are expected and I'm just really proud of the staff we have and the job they do. Second, with the approval of the budget, which will happen on December 7th, it does have a DIES adjustment in there, and our thought is somewhere between December 6th and our next meeting, which is January 15th, we need to get that done. And that'll provide the least interruption to anything that we're doing here in the city council. So we have about six weeks and I just wanted the council to know that we're going to start that a little bit earlier than the first of the year because of the timing to get that done. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And who do you want to go to among departments? Start over there? Sure. Go, Director Farman.
All right.
Why don't you just do everybody's reports?
Enough for me tonight, so no further reports. Thank you again, though.
Do you want to do parks, too? I mean, I have no report. Thanks.
I have no report. No report.
Clerk, anything?
I'm prompting her.
Oh, okay.
She's passed the buck for me. Just a few things. First, thank you so much for your approval of our resolution tonight. It's a big deal for our department today and tomorrow, and it really demonstrates your support of our organization, so thank you for that. Certainly goes without saying, but our department is participating in No Shave November this month. You perhaps saw that. It was not a lazy morning for me. It was, it's a concerted effort. And the commander, not as good, but he's working on it. We have about 15 of our staff members who are participating in that. We raised around $1,000 that's been donated to charity, and that remains through the end of the month. Coffee with a Cop on November 15th, this is a Wednesday, from 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock in the morning.
I had a question on your report. So theft this year over last year, almost double from 30, a little over 30 to a little under 60. Is that all just related to those two nights or is, what else is going on?
No, much of our theft, just as a general topic, is mail and package theft. There also are some systemic issues with our data analysis that we're fixing out, fixing now that we have a crime analyst. There are many offenses that have been sort of duplicated. So there's a system called NIBR, which is the National Incident-Based Reporting System. And let's say somebody breaks into a car. That's one offense. But if they take five bucks out of the console, that's also a theft. And how it should be reported is as a vehicle trespass, and then the theft is sort of this lesser included. Instead, the way it has been pooling data is it shows one crime as a vehicle trespass and a second crime as a theft. And we've been essentially, in many cases, duplicating the number of offenses that we've had. We're clearing that up right now. As you're looking at the year-to-date specifically, it was just sort of identified as an issue, a computer issue that our analyst is working out. That certainly doesn't account for all of it. We have our share of thefts, primarily around things like mail. It's the lion's share of our thefts.
Hey, chief, can you give us an update on the August crime spree? What's going on with the bad guys?
Nothing since my last update, which if you, if you saw that update on our community engagement platform, there have been a few arrests made in related, yet unrelated cases, not our cases. And the collaborative investigative effort is still waiting on a production of records, subpoenas, digital information from the cellular providers, those kinds of things. I do, and I can say with all confidence, I just asked this last week, that there have been no other instances known to have been committed by this particular group. It is essentially...
Anywhere. There's been, in none of any other cities?
No.
Great. Thanks.
Okay, city attorney? All right, well, then I would motion to adjourn. Anyone?
You're moved.
All right. We are adjourned at 9:57 PM.